This is the MISD June 24, 2025 special meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of Texas.
Pledge of Allegiance. ... United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. A pledge of allegiance to the Texas state, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I see. Ms. Alcantara, are there any public comments?
I have all of them.
Few things to go over with before we hear those. The Board will hear comments from the audience only during the public comment portion of the meeting. Individuals wishing to speak must have added their name and topic to the public comment sign up sheet prior to the start of the Board meeting. The Board will allot three minutes for tonight's public comment portion of the meeting. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the Board. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. The Board requests that any comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, be courteous and respectful. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. So we have four public comments. Thank you for registering to speak to the Board this evening so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. We ask that you limit them to three minutes. As you can see, there are a number of instances in which the Board can respond to you during public comment. We cannot take any votes or actions based upon public comments. Please keep comments respectful and focused on the topic you've registered to speak for. First up is Shane Webb.
Thank you. My name is Shane Webb. I have three daughters in this school district, two of which are in high school, Montgomery High School, and they are on the Bells Dance Team. I'm here today to voice my support for a change in leadership in the director's position of the Montgomery Bells Dance Team. There are over fifteen people here behind me who are in support of this as well, and there are many more who are not here, most likely because they're afraid of retaliation towards their daughters who are currently on the team. You all have seen and heard and read lots of testimony and evidence in this matter. The administration has failed to take enough action to make change, so it is up to you to make that change to protect our girls. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Next up is Alyssa Lockridge.
Hello. My name is Alyssa, and I am a former employee of MISD, as well as the former director of the Junior Bells Dance Team. And I am reading a statement on behalf of one of my former dancers. She did not feel comfortable coming up here and speaking, so I'm going to start. She says, "I am scared to say this, so I asked Ms. Lockridge to read this. I am a current member of the Montgomery High School Bells. I think the Bells should have a new director. I don't feel that our dance director truly understands us or tries to connect with our team. She doesn't actively teach us. Most of the instruction comes from the officers. She rarely spends time working with us on our routines and often stays in her office during practice. She allows some girls on the team to get away with almost anything, including breaking school rules, while other girls have very strict rules. She does not make anyone feel welcome and is not okay to treat students the way she treats us. It has become more like a popularity contest than a dance team. The funny thing is, is that even the girls she does like don't feel welcomed by her. I can't think of anyone on the team who feels completely accepted by our director. It is also hard to do more than one activity because she is not willing to let some girls do more than one activity. But some girls can do several things if you are one of her favorites. One of my teammates missed a performance to attend Fashion Week and still performed the next week. But when I left school for a doctor's appointment, she told me I could not perform at the football game. There have been several times when it feels like the dance team director treats her favorites differently. For example, there was a situation where one of my teammates was struggling with a move, and instead of being taken out of the dance, she was given multiple chances, and the director even asked several other dancers to help her, even though she was never able to perform the move. But if someone who isn't one of the favorites tries for the same move and doesn't get it right away, they are not given another opportunity to try. They are not assigned that role, and no one is asked to help them improve. She creates a lot of problems on the team because she always compares us to each other. Right before spring break, she pulled us all together. She was crying and went around and said different things to each girl. Some girls were told they were perfect and would be successful in life, while other girls were told that she just likes their Instagram posts and they have a good sense of humor. I don't know why we use class time to let her compare all of us when we should have been practicing for Nationals. At Nationals, she was not around us much. We would see her occasionally, and when we checked in at the hotel, but she never gave us much direction. A lot of my friends talked about quitting but stayed because they hoped there would be a positive change. I do wish that the dance team director would be someone who cared about us and wanted to teach us. I don't think it's fair that a teacher can get away with breaking all the rules, but we cannot. She should be an example on how to behave and not be an example of what a bully is like." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. If you're going to excuse me, and I'm probably going to butcher this last name, but I'm just going to say Lyle.
Yep. I go by Lyle mostly all the time. So I'd like to thank the Board for the opportunity to speak today. Our daughter was in the Bells for five years. During that time, we have had many negative interactions with both the dance director and the school administration, from the assistant principal level to the superintendent, with no satisfactory results. A continuing theme regarding the lack of action and results is the fact that the school administration has changed fairly significantly almost every year. This fact has apparently led to the problem that there have been no records kept of ours or anyone else's complaints against the dance director. Therefore, every time we've had a meeting with anyone at the school district, it appears to them as the first time that there's been an issue. These items highlight a systemic issue as well as a dance director issue. Due to the fact that there have been no consequences that we are aware of for the director and her behavior, it has only emboldened her to continue her actions, and it seems to get worse every year. I have four examples that I consider to be the most egregious that I'm going to go over. First is excessive punishment. The dance director removed our daughter from leadership and made her sit out practices for missing a week due to a family vacation, of which, of course, our daughter clearly has no control over when I can take my vacation. The director wrote a letter to us detailing our daughter's breach of contract and even included an excused doctor's absence against her to make it seem as though there were multiple offenses. We expected some form of discipline due to missing practice. However, the severity appeared to be over the top, especially since it was truly her first offense, as an illness with a doctor's note should never be counted against anyone. The junior high assistant principal and principal ignored our complaints. Additionally, we are aware of other Bells members that have had similar or worse infractions of the Bells code that were treated much more leniently. Second is she called the police unnecessarily on my wife and I. The dance director called the police and had my wife and I removed from a dance competition and not allowed back in for sitting in the wrong seats. All of this despite the officer who did show up saying that no action from him was warranted for anything. I'd like to point out that when we were first informed that we were in reserved seating, we moved. Apparently, though, we did not move far enough for the director's liking. We felt like this was completely out of spite and her disdain for us. Administrative indifference. We did not bring the previous example up to the school administration since it was our daughter's last year in the junior Bells. However, when we found out later that she, the director, would be taking over both roles of junior and high school Bells, we went to the superintendent to voice our concerns. The superintendent at that time claimed despite ours and other previous complaints and interactions with the school, there were no documented complaints against the director. Therefore, there was no reason that he could see that would keep him from making the decision for the director to take over both roles. As I mentioned previously, this is an issue in particular that highlights a systemic failure within the district to properly protect our children from toxic and abusive environments. Inappropriate contact and harassment. The director also texted our daughter multiple times during family funeral about missing practice. An assistant principal did intervene on this one by telling the dance director to stop. However, on my daughter's return to school, the hostile comments from the director about my wife, in both private comments to my daughter as well as with the rest of the Bells in attendance, increased, leading our daughter to quit the team due to the abusive and hostile atmosphere created by the director. Our experience with the dance director is far from unique, as others have had similar issues. But based on our experience alone, it should be obvious that the dance director has no business being in an influential leadership position over our young and impressionable children. Having said that, our students deserve a leader who is committed to their success, as committed to their success as they are. The current director has failed to establish meaningful relationships with the team and has only created chaos and discontent. The dancers do not see her as a mentor or an artistic guide, and her treatment of my daughter and many of the other girls has eroded respect and trust. If the desire is to have a program that is a positive influence on our young people instead of a petty, abusive, and toxic one, we must prioritize qualified, honest, respected, committed, and connected leadership as opposed to what we currently have in the dance director position. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Adeline Ward.
My name is Adeline. Apologize if I'm nervous looking or whatever. You know, I am still in high school. I'm a part of the Bells. I'm going to be a senior this upcoming year, and I am a lieutenant colonel, so I do hold an important piece on this team, and that's why I want to speak out today. Personally, being involved with my director since sixth grade, I've definitely looked up to her as someone that could help me grow as a person and help me, you know, lead the team more and more. But as I've continued to grow and as I've continued to have her, I've definitely seen a difference between how she treats people as they grow up. So no matter what, you know, anyone's going through in their personal life or how they look, it should never be talked about yet. As I got into high school, it was very common for her to speak on people's bodies or their hair or talk about their home lives. And this wasn't talked about to the team, of course, but she would talk to the officers like we're her besties, and she can talk to, you know, us like that, which is fun. But it's kind of upsetting because those are my teammates that I love truly and dearly, and it's really upsetting how she's changed, and it seems like it's more about money now and it's more about the popularity. I 100% agree with that because I personally am not financially all over the place where I can spend hundreds and thousands of dollars. And I feel like I used to get so much help from her, and now it's gotten to a point where she talks down on me like I'm still a junior high kid, and she talks down on me like I have a say-so in how I make money because I can't have a job. Because being in Bells as an officer, there's no way I can have a job. It's my senior year, so I have no job, no nothing, no way to make money. Yet she holds me back from being able to do competitions and being able to do these dances that I want to do because I have a passion for dance. So I think she holds people back. She talks about people, and I just think it's definitely turned into an extremely less motivating and stressful environment because the difference from ninth grade to my past year and junior year, I had zero confidence. And I genuinely think it only came from her as my director. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank each of you for your comments. The Board will go into a closed meeting as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act for the reasons listed on our agenda. The time now is 5:13. It is now 7:09, and we are back in open session. Having heard the appeal, does any Board member wish to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that this Board upholds the Level 2 grievance as heard.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
I'd like to talk first. On this grievance, I'm voting against the district's recommendation on how they would like to handle it. The issue here has been going on for too many years with the current administration and past administration on this employee. I feel it's not the right, excuse me, I feel it's not right that the district is quick to discipline a student for infractions, but when an employee with infractions, nothing's documented. An employee should not be allowed to verbally bully a student, retaliate if they or the parent raises concerns. For this behavior, I believe the employee should be removed from her assignment.
Though this decision was not an easy one to make, given all of the testimony, not just in this room, what all of you all have heard tonight, but all of the evidence that was presented in the Level 1 grievance is all that we are allowed to consider. And with that being said, it's not this Board's jurisdiction to make HR and employment decisions. That's an administrative decision. It has to be made at an administrative level. You know, having heard all of these things and read and discussed all of the evidence that were presented, you know, we've come to this conclusion based on the only thing that we're able to grieve. You know, hearing everything, I mean, Dr. Ruffin, you understand this.
The severity of these claims. I'm sorry to chime in, but I think that's kind of where you're going. Dr. Ruffin, do you understand the severity of these things that were brought up tonight and that they need to be looked into, and that action needs to be taken?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to speak for the record on I've abstained from voting, and I want to make it clear of why that is, because of my daughter is on the dance team. Depending on how I would possibly vote on this, I'm not going to have any backlash on my daughter and have her go through that, so I'm abstaining from voting on this.
Unfortunately, due to a medical emergency on the day of the grievance hearing, I was unable to be a part of it, therefore I will need to abstain from voting.
Do you have anything? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained?
Abstained.
The motion carries. I'm going to read a statement on behalf of the Board and just kind of go through where we're at and what we are kind of expecting to happen from this point forward. First, I want to thank each of you that had the courage to speak tonight. While we can only consider the facts and evidence presented during the grievance process, we heard your comments and have taken them to heart. The Board's decision tonight to uphold Level 2 decision is in no way an indication of disregard for your concerns shared by those involved. We deeply respect all perspectives and appreciate the input from our community. After a thorough review of the process and evidence provided at each level, the Board is voting to affirm the decisions made at Level 1 and 2. We believe the grievance process was followed, and our decision reflects our trust in that process and the professionalism of our campus and district leadership. At the same time, we recognize that serious concerns were raised during this process that warrant attention. The Board is directing the superintendent to immediately engage in direct and timely conversations to ensure improvement in the system's processes and the culture of the program. This includes setting clear expectations for enhanced communication and opportunities for student and parent feedback, implementing measures to ensure an environment where a student feels physically and emotionally secure and able to thrive, and ensuring the program reflects the district's values and expectations moving forward. The time is now 7:14, and this meeting is adjourned.
Okay. Ask for leadership. You are just a community out and these children.
Again. 7:15, and I would like to call the Montgomery ISD June 24, 2025 regular meeting to order. Dr. Ruffin, would you lead us in the indication?
You bet. Please bow with me. Father God, we just come to you honored and humbled to be representative and to be able to serve this community. Father God, we just pray for safety and security for our students and our staff throughout the summertime. We pray for rest and relaxation and time spent with family and loved ones, appreciating the gifts that you've graced us with, Father, and the blessings that you've bestowed upon our lives. We ask for leadership and guidance, and that all decisions throughout our district go to glorify you. Forgive us for we failed you, and just let me pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Board.
United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. A pledge of allegiance to the Texas state, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Dr. Ruffin, special resignations and recognitions and presentations.
Yes, we have got some friends from the Lake Conroe Republicans Women's Association. Hey, Ms. Mook? Come on down. They're hard to miss in the red.
Who are red shirts? You guys. But thank you, Superintendent Ruffin, President Nguyen, and the rest of the school board for allowing us to come before you tonight. I think I better turn that up. As you can see from all of the red shirts, and we do have one in blue, but that's okay, it's got the red logo, we are here to say thank you for your continued support of our organization and to share about some of the successes that we've actually experienced this past year with Montgomery Independent School District. And so I'd like to introduce our president, Molly Adame, to highlight those efforts.
Good morning, good evening. My name is Molly Adame. I'm the president of the Lake Conroe Area Republican Women, and I'm also a parent of a Montgomery High School graduate, class of 2015. Our organization is a diverse group of women who have come together to promote political activism through social engagement to keep Texas red. Men are always welcome to join as an associate member. We hold general meetings monthly, except during the summer, we're taking a break, and we have many other functions throughout the year which help focus on current events, community service, supporting Republican political candidates, and leadership. So we are not just about politics, but about being a positive voice in our community. Guidelines are handed down from the state and national levels outlining our major initiatives each year. One of those, and our favorite among many, is education and collaborating with our local school district to create an awareness of the political process in our county and our country. We are pleased to talk about our partnership this past year with Montgomery School District. We are always looking for innovative ideas to engage both members, students, and teachers, and we welcome any suggestions or ideas you may have. Lisa?
Okay. Thank you. Well, good evening, school board members and Dr. Ruffin. I'm Lisa Tater. I'm the literacy chair of Lake Conroe Area Republican Women. Recognize a few faces up here. But anyway, I just wanted to share our literacy program is what we do every fall, and we usually invite an author or a speaker, someone that is a specialist in literacy. We had a really good meeting this last September, and we also invited Skytree Book Fairs to come along and have a great assortment and options of good, family-friendly books based on patriotism, conservatism, and family values, good, you know, moral character, those types of things. And so we were able to purchase through our club members, through the guests at that program. We purchased over 140 books that we ended up donating to all of your school libraries within MISD. So my committee and I, we were able to bring those, to deliver them, and it was very exciting. We got to just kind of do age appropriateness for each of the schools in their libraries and even the branch library at Charles B. Stewart. And the other thing is, we were able to bring some pocket constitutions at Morgan Luttrell's office, donated last year 850 copies because with the climate in our political arena, you never know when you're going to need to pull out that pocket constitution if you're having a little debate with somebody. So we were able to do that for your junior high at Oak Hills and Montgomery Junior High. So we delivered those also for those students in the government classes. And so this fall coming up, we have invited the MISD, she is the instructional specialist, Donette Key, so she's going to be our speaker, and she's very excited to come and speak, and it's going to be on Thursday, September 18th. You guys are all invited. We'd love to have you come. And she's going to just share her specialization and her goals, the challenges, you know, that she faces, and just interventions that she has. So anyway, the one thing I do want to say is that I'm very excited about, I was at a meeting at the Honor Cafe, they did a recap, the TexasValues.org did a recap on some of the legislative initiatives and the bills that passed, and you guys are probably familiar with SB 13, which is the No Harmful Books or Materials in School Libraries. Are you guys familiar with that? So that passed, and so this bill will prohibit pornographic books in school libraries by creating a streamlined process for selecting and removing library books. This bill is a stronger effort to address sexually explicit books in libraries by having a strong legal standard that should withstand a court challenge. It also gives school districts a clear framework to address this issue. So anyway, I'm very excited that this bill has come into law and just, I am just sure you guys are going to see that it gets fully enforced because that is my heart, that our kids and students just don't get derailed in their early years, you know, in areas that they don't need to be going. So, thank you for your time. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. I want to talk a little bit about our My American Hero project. I'm sure, I think all of you have attended our My American Hero. We actually service both Willis and Montgomery, but we actually farmed that out this year, so now we're only going to do Montgomery. We're very excited, and another club is going to handle Willis that actually votes in Willis. So they're excited, we're excited, everybody doesn't have to drive as far, it's going to be a win-win. Our My American Hero project starts in February of each year. Our chairman communicates with each one of the principals of all the elementary campuses to give instructions about this special program, where fifth graders will write an essay about their favorite American hero. Teachers are asked to submit their top five essays from each class. Approximately 30 essays from each of the seven schools are submitted, and the committee judges about 210 essays. Out of those essays, Lake Conroe Republican Awards 10 honorable mentions with a first, second, and third place for every school. The 21 students and their parents, and maybe their grandparents this year, will get to come and be honored at our luncheon. They are recognized at our My American Hero Awards Luncheon in April. Over $500 in awards are presented by our local legislators and elected officials. And then in May, our scholarship committee continued this year with the recognition of two graduating seniors, Jake Hutchinson from Montgomery High School and Kimberly Boyd of Lake Creek High School. Both are going to A&amp;M, and that's just a coincidence that I also went to A&amp;M. They were presented $1,000 scholarships for their education this coming year.
Good evening. I'm Carol Parsons, and I'm so old that my son graduated from MHS in 2008. So, anyway, I'm just so honored to be here and just quickly wanted to let you guys know that Governor Abbott just signed SB 10, which requires every single classroom to display the Ten Commandments. So we'd ask the honor of being your sole provider for those, for every single classroom, and they have specific verbiage. When I became a Christian, I didn't understand the "those" and "these" and "thous" and stuff, but that's what's on here, but that's fine. And so we'd like to provide those for you if that's okay with you guys. We're working currently with a printer to get all the details ironed out and such, and there are challenges in other states against it, of course, so... there are challenges in other states against it, of course, so, but it doesn't take effect until September. So we're ready to go if you guys want us, and we'd love to be your own, your only person or organization that does that. Also, just to recap, my favorite thing, the National Model Project, we've been so successful, and we just really appreciate all the support you guys have given us. We've done over 400 posters for the Montgomery School District alone. The law was passed in like 21 that said you had to have a In God We Trust poster in a very conspicuous place, I think they said, so we did the big posters right off the bat in all your school campuses, and then we went through the proper channels through superintendent to make, to see if any teachers wanted them. And in 2023, a law was passed saying if a teacher wanted them, and they could either provide them themselves, or they didn't even have to have them donated. So we've done over, like I said, over 400 posters so far for MISD, and just, we're in sort of a maintenance mode with that, but we've always got them. Same with the Ten Commandments, if that comes to fruition, we'd love to be your go-to for that as well, and we're so honored to be able to work so closely with you. I'm real shy, I mean, I always loved the MISD area, and we also worked with the Lake Creek Teenage Republicans, and we have a lady named Carrie Butler that is our sponsor for that, and we want to continue to support that as well. So please, any suggestions you have, anything we can do for you, that's what we're here for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I almost forgot, it's all, you know, I've got, I tricked out some posters for the new board with the new picture and such, and next to Mr. Keelen over there, I've got enough for everyone. They can do that, because we.
Okay. I thought that was very nice. Carol took the time last week to have each of you a poster or a new framed poster to put in your office or to take home or to put up wherever. Just a little recap, and thank you ladies for being here, there are some other members in the back. It was summer, it was hard to get a lot of people here, but, oh, and my daughter was a 2009 graduate, so, and my husband was a 1970 graduate, so we could go down the list of Mokes if you want me to, but we won't. So I'll just take those, those right there since we're comparing notes. But for next year, we will, we want to continue this partnership and we want it to grow, and so we do ask for your approval to allow for the distribution of those Constitution handbooks to your eighth grade students. I know Congressman Luttrell is willing to pay for those, and so that's a nice donation, and that you allow us to work with your school librarians to donate the books that our members have actually purchased at that September meeting, and we'll be dividing those out so that every school gets a fair amount. And then, one of the requests that I had, and this came as a result of the My American Hero Awards Program, was that perhaps we had time in August during your teacher in-service that we could take a few minutes to train those elementary principals, I guess I'm looking over here at Carrie and saying, we would like to make a video, come in person, and talk about what's really expected out of that, because we think that maybe teachers, as well as students, need a clearer understanding about what a hero is. And so as we're judging those essays, we'd like to pay more attention to that. Assisting Carol with the ongoing distribution of the In God We Trust posters, anytime anybody wants one, we'll make sure that, you know, they get them right away. And Carol and I have been talking all week about the Ten Commandments, and, you know, the governor hadn't figured out how they're going to print all these yet, so we've been asking, you know, where are these all coming from, and it's kind of like, oh, we don't know. And so because there's already specific guidelines for how they want them printed, we were like, let's go to our own printer and see if they might be interested in doing at least 500 of them for us for the first run. We don't know exactly how many rooms are in all of your campuses, but we estimated about 500 would cover you after the first of the year, or, you know, we can make as many as you need, and we feel like we have financial funds for that, so, you know, we're not asking you to pay for that, we're going to take care of that for you, but we'd like to be the premier organization that provides that new document for your classroom. Once again, I just want to say thank you, we love being a part of MISD, and you guys and ladies have always been so supportive of anything we've asked of you. So once again, thank you for letting us come before you tonight, we appreciate it.
Thank each of you as well. Dr. Ruffin, any more special recognition? All right. Item number four is hearing for citizens present to address the board about the budget for the 2025-2026 school year.
Good evening. We have a packed agenda tonight, so I'll go through this fairly quickly. This is the culmination of many months of work and many meetings, board meetings, meetings with staff, campus leaders and department leaders, and we're finally here. What a difference a year makes. This time last year, we were presenting a deficit budget of about $4.4 million, and with the support of our community and some help from Austin, we actually have a balanced budget, so we're in a really good place right now. Our revenues equal our expenditures. We were able to allocate funds for pay raises and adjustments to the employee compensation plan, and we funded additional positions necessary for growth in key focus areas and increased operational costs. When you look at our revenue side of the picture, we have three primary sources of revenue, that's our property taxes, our state revenue and our federal dollars. The amount of our local and state dollars depends on the property values in the district. As property tax collections increase and values go up, our state revenues decrease. This shows our anticipated revenue increases and decreases for next year. We had an increase to certified values last year after the budget was adopted. Our Hold Harmless and Special Ed CTE funding mechanisms had an increase of $2.8 million. Vader Prop A was $5.4 million, and we got additional funding from House Bill 2 that just passed this summer from the state legislature, $4.7 million. And then there was a correction to the values submitted to the comptroller's office by our appraisal district that resulted in $3 million. So our total increase in revenues is $16,564.702. Decreases, we had another decrease to our Medicaid funding this year, about $185,000. Interest earnings are dropping just a little bit, and we're projecting about $100,000 decrease there. And then we had our original deficit that we had to overcome, that we adopted last year, $4.2 million. So when you combine the deficit with the decreases, we're at $4.5 million. Our net increases in revenue above prior year expenses are $11,989,831. Expenditure increases, we've got compensation and benefits that will be adopted later this evening of about $6 million. We added positions in the 24-25 year after the Vader, about $765,000. Next year, we've added positions and growth expenditures of $1.3 million, special ed positions, $1.7 million. Our property and casualty insurance has gone up every year, and we're going to bring the CTE building onboard with that, and we're looking at about $400,000 increase there. Special Ed students and residential placement services is $525,000. Our recapture as a result of the Vader is $608,000. Increased CTE expenditures that are required with the increase in CTE students is $375,000, and we restored our campus budget cuts and department budget cuts from last year, and we have some increased software expenses for $303,000. So our net increase in expenditures is $11,989,831.
Real quick, Ben, on that last slide.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, the word recapture hits everybody, so just to clarify, that has to do with the copper pennies, is that correct?
That's correct.
That we just got through the Vader, just want to reiterate that?
Yes, ma'am.
So everybody understands why that word is there?
That's correct.
Okay.
This breaks our budget out by function, I won't go through each individual functional line, but most of the increases are payroll increases and staff increases for those functions. Our total budget's $104,931,939. And this is all three budgets that we're required to adopt, our general fund budget, food service budget, they're projecting the surplus, they're, they're spending surplus funds and for capital projects, they've got too much fund balance at the moment, and they're required to spend some of that down, and so they're anticipating spending more than they're bringing in. I said surplus, it's actually deficit there, but it's intentional. And then our debt service budget is $38.6 million revenues and expenditures. Does anybody have any questions?
Is there anyone in the audience that's here to speak on the budget? Ben, on behalf of the board, I know the amount of time and effort that was put forth into this to get to this final number, we, we as a board are, again, are thankful for what was, what happened in Austin and locally with our community that stood up and supported Prop A. We were in a difficult spot last year, and we were faced with having to make some difficult decisions, and this board was tasked with having to go out for a Vader, and we didn't take that lightly. We knew that it was in the best interest for our students and our staff and our community, and we just want to thank the, the community again for rising up and supporting our district to continue to make us the premier district in Texas.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Item number five, public input on federal program grants.
Yes, so this time of year is our time to review our federal programs, so we're just going to keep talking about money. This is the time where the application is due, and so it's called an ESSA application, and it are our Title I, our Title II, and Title IV. We welcome feedback on this plan. The application has not been submitted yet, so we have a window of time to get feedback from our community. There is a, this presentation is on our district website, there's a little pop-up that pops up, so you, our community can review that, and then a link for a survey where they can then provide input on any feedback. We'll review that feedback and make any adjustments before submitting our final application. So just to kind of get a little background, one of the things that's important to remember about our federal grants is that is a rule called supplement, not supplant. So all those things that Ben just talked about, what we spend our money on in our general budget, if we spend those things in our local dollars, our general budget dollars, we can't then turn around and replace that with federal funds. These federal fund programs are for additional services to provide to our students, increasing their academic achievement. And so part of that, a lot of times we get public input that says, hey, let's use this money on raises. Well, we can't do that because we pay for our salaries and our raises out of the general fund, the federal funds are not for that use. So Title I is one of our programs, we have three campuses that qualify for Title I services, that's Lincoln Elementary, Montgomery Elementary, and Creekside Elementary. This program is for improving the basic programs on the campus specifically targeted to closing those achievement gaps for students from low-income families. Once we qualify a campus, each campus then determines how they want to use their allocated funds on their campus. So our total for the Title I grant is, we are anticipated to receive $862,000 in that area. We reserve a certain amount of that at the district level, we pay a certain percentage of salaries for two positions that are managing that program. We also cover costs related to district-wide parent engagement, indirect costs, and then homeless reservation. Each campus gets their allocated amount, that is based on the number of low-income students at that campus. And then you can see that most of them have certain categories, they all fall in the same categories, so salaries for additional positions like academic and behavior interventionists, paraprofessionals that can help support in the classroom, these salaries are in addition to what we would have normally allocated based on our staffing charts. Then they can also cover professional development opportunities, field trips, and parent engagement and supplies. Title II, this is kind of where we think about professional development, so the purpose of this one is to increase student achievement, and you do that by improving the quality and effectiveness of your employees. And so this is all about increasing the number of effective teachers so that you have more teachers that are available to reach those low-income and minority students and have greater access to great teachers. So that's the intent of Title II. We get $248,000, or I anticipate $248,000 this year. Those funds, right now, the plan is to spend those in these areas, the area of curriculum planning, so we take our expert teachers together, we may pay for supplemental pay for work outside of school hours, we may pay for substitutes to cover so that we can pull them together during the school day, and then we also have subs and supplemental pay for our new teacher mentor program. In addition to that, we cover some special education stipends, this is the area of high needs, like our self-contained classrooms or some hard-to-fill areas. We have support for our MTSS and RTI process, and then we also do a lot of professional training and materials. This year, we're focusing on some curriculum frameworks, continuing with our behavior training and supporting our classroom teachers in that area, and then on academic intervention. And then Title IV, this grant is to focus in these areas, providing all students access to a well-rounded education, improving academic outcomes for, by providing, maintaining safe and healthy students, and then also effective use of technologies included in that. This is a much smaller grant, we get around $62,000 this year for that, and the activities that we are focusing on this year will include advanced academics area, we support some of the fine arts, and have a choir activity workshop that is planned, safe and healthy students, we support our counselors, and providing additional supplies and character education materials for them, we send some people to a school safety conference, and then additional behavior training as well. And then the area of technology, we focus on keeping our campuses safe through cybersecurity audits. So that is the current intent for our programs. This link here is the link that takes us to that survey. You don't have to write that down here because it is on our website, and it will be there until June 30th, so that anyone who would like to provide some input has the opportunity to do it in that format as well. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Mosby. Public comments, let's see, we have one? Okay. The board will hear comments from the audience only during the public comment portion of the meeting. Individuals wishing to speak must have added their name and topic to the public comment sign-up sheet prior to the start of the board meeting. The board will allot three minutes for tonight's public comment portion of each meeting. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the board. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, and other community members by name. The board requests that comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, be courteous and respectful. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Thank you for registering to speak to the board this evening. So that everyone has an opportunity to speak, we ask that you limit them to three minutes. As you can see, there are a limited number of instances in which the board can respond to you during public comment. We cannot take any votes or actions based upon the public comments. Please keep comments respectful and focused on the topic you're registered to speak. Pablo Chapa.
Hello. Thank y'all for having us. Good evening, everyone, my name is Pablo Chapa.
And my name is Presley Payne.
We're very glad to be here today on behalf of the Oak Hills Junior High Band Department. Thank you, MISD Board Trustees, for a moment of your time.
At the beginning of the 2024-2025 school year, Pablo and I were elected as the president and secretary of the Oak Hills Junior High Band respectively. As the year went on, and we helped Mr. Ibarra organize and encourage the band, we soon realized that he may be one of the hardest-working members in our school.
Mr. Ibarra's worked so hard over the last year, he's always in the band hall after school and doesn't leave until 5:00 PM each day. This year, he has poured his whole heart and soul into the band as he does each year. Along with the usual busyness of having to run three bands, this year alone, Mr. Ibarra has continued the jazz band, he's held sectionals every day of the week for months at a time, he's orchestrated the UIL, took both honor and symphonic band to a festival, listened to every student's opinions, even down to the smallest things like finding time to write the joke of the day on the whiteboard, and much more.
All this to say, we would ask for an assistant for our bands. All this to say, we would ask for an assistant for our bands. Our band director is a dedicated and passionate educator who pours his time and energy into assuring that each student achieves their fullest potential in music. However, the demands of leading a growing program, especially one with many students, have become overwhelming. By hiring an assistant band director, we believe we can elevate the quality of our music program and ensure continued success for both the band and the students.
In all, the Oak Hills Band Department would really appreciate it if you could all look into this incredible opportunity for our M.I.C. bands to shine. Thank you. We've also, over the past year, Presley and I made a petition, and to all our fellow band students, including honor, symphonic, and beginner bands, sixth through eighth grade, we gave them this petition. We acquired one-hundred-and-fifteen students total to agree to the petition that...
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, item number seven. Would anyone like to pull an item from the consent agenda? If none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through E as presented?
I motion we approve the consent agenda items A through E as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Ivy. Thank you, Ms. Turner. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries. I'm going to ask that we kind of jump around a little bit. Instead of going straight into the action items, we're going to go to the information items. I know it's getting late, and hopefully we can get some people out of here, and then we can go back to the action items. So information item number one is a department update on specialized learning. Welcome our fearless leader of our specialized learning department, Ms. Carrie Clark.
Good evening. Good evening. Well, I want to just thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to deliver our specialized learning department update for you. So I know that it's late in the afternoon, so we're going to go ahead and get started. I did quickly want to introduce myself. There are many new board members that I've not had an opportunity to meet yet, so I am Carrie Clark. I am the executive director for specialized learning for this fabulous district, and I just completed my third year here in Montgomery. All right. So when we look at our specialized learnings mission, it continues to be basically three things. We're going to engage our students in learning at the appropriate levels, and we're going to support them in the least restrictive environment. We're going to continue to support our teachers and staff through a process of training and critical skill building. And finally, we're going to continue to leverage our collaborative partnerships with our parents, our families, and our community members. When we look at the organizational chart of our department, I have the great opportunity to work with some of the most amazing leadership in our special education. We have Julie Holmes, who is our assistant director. She supervises all of our evaluation and assessment teams. She also heads all of our initial evaluation and child find for the district. We have Elena Simmonsman. She is our dyslexia and five-oh-four coordinator. She handles everything dyslexia-related and five-oh-four. And then finally, our SPEC coordinator, Ms. Natasha Webb. She supervises and manages all of our behavior teams across the district, as well as our Spark team, which focuses on student services such as specialized Mission Impossible, transition, adaptive P.E., and Special Olympics. In addition to being able to supervise this amazing group of leaders, I also directly supervise all of our art facilitators across the district on our eleven campuses, as well as our related service staff. When we look at specialized learning, I know Ben just got up here and talked about the increases in special ed. We are seeing higher and higher numbers of students qualify for special ed in the district. So you can look at our three-year comparison and see that we have consistently added staff as we've had students enroll into our district and need more services. So in looking at twenty-five, twenty-six, we are adding to a couple of areas. We're going to add a diagnostician. We're going to add two dyslexia interventionists. We're going to add three art facilitators. And what we're going to do with these facilitators, they're going to travel amongst the eleven campuses to help some of our art facilitators that have extremely large caseloads. And then for behavior, we are going to hire two behavior interventionists that will be housed, one at Creekside Elementary and one at Montgomery Elementary. We're going to talk a little bit more about that later on in the presentation, but they're going to be there to support our behavioral programs at our elementary campuses. When we look at special education enrollment, looking at over the last three years, you can clearly see that our numbers continue to rise. The numbers that are in green indicate a consistent growth at those schools. At the end of this school year, we ended with one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-five students in special education. Six-hundred-and-sixty-two of those students are identified and serviced as students with dyslexia. Our campuses that continue to be the higher campuses for special education populations are Kenan, Madely Ranch, and our two junior high campuses. When you look at why the increase, why do we continue to have large numbers of special education students? There's several different factors that play into this. The largest factor is the new federal and state law requiring that all students that are served with dyslexia move into special education. In the past, we've always had some students in special ed, but a big majority of those dyslexic students were able to be served under five-oh-four. The U.S. Department of Ed came in and slapped Texas's hand three years ago and put us in corrective action, and we've had three years in a roll-in process to be able to move all of these kids. So by the end of this school year, one-hundred percent of all dyslexia was to be moved under special ed. And Montgomery has been able to meet this timeline. We've also had over two-hundred students this school year move into Montgomery, into our school, that already are special education, that came with an active IEP. We're seeing huge numbers of special education referrals in our early childhood, our three- and four-year-old students. And when those students qualify for special education, then we have to place them into the school for services. We're also seeing large, huge numbers of homeschool and private-school students that have never been in public education coming to enroll for the first time. These students are extremely behind academically. They oftentimes are found to be disabled and in need of an IEP. And then finally, we're seeing an increased number in students that are enrolling or qualifying in our district that are exhibiting challenging and extreme behavior needs that require special education support and services. All right. Section five-oh-four is also housed under my department. Now, section five-oh-four is a general education program, but it is for students that have disabilities, but they may not necessarily require special education, but they would simply require some accommodations to be able to stay in the general classroom. So you'll see a count by campus of the students. We have about one-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-eight at the end of this school year. Our five-oh-four numbers have dropped quite a bit because dyslexia was our largest group served, and now they've moved into special education. But what we've seen as a replacement is huge numbers of special education referrals that require a lot of time, meeting, data collection, and paperwork. And so currently, our assistant principals at the elementary campuses are in charge of five-oh-four in addition to all the special education referral paperwork. We've been fortunate enough to be able to rework these coordinator positions. We've added two more this year. So starting next year, all five-oh-four and all child find paperwork observations, everything's going to be handled by these three individuals, which are going to free up significant amounts of time for our assistant principals to be into those classrooms, being those instructional leaders and helping our students and our teachers. When we look at the initial special ed referrals that we're receiving in the district, we had six-hundred-and-twenty-four initial special education referrals this year. You'll see the breakdown by campus. Our largest referral campuses continue to be Kenan, Creekside, Madely Ranch, and Lone Star Elementary. We've completed all of those initial referrals within federal and state timeline, and my team also completed over five-hundred reevaluations for students that are already in special education. So at the end of the year, we completed one-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-four evaluations, all within federal and state timeline. Very proud of my department. Our highest referral categories, where are we seeing our students qualify, continue to be specific learning disability is where dyslexia is housed. That's about forty percent. Autism at fifteen percent. Other health impairment for ADHD at seventeen percent, and emotional disturbance at ten percent. When we look at our life skills units, which we refer to as our CARES classrooms, we're seeing more and more students come to us with significant complex needs, communication needs, mobility, toileting, hygiene care, behavior. And we're finding that our numbers are growing and that we need to add some classrooms. We've always had two CARES classrooms at Madely Ranch and Stewart Creek, but this year, looking at the predictions for next year, we made the decision to go ahead and put additional classrooms at all of the campuses. So for next year, all of our elementaries will have two CARES classrooms. This will allow us to split those kiddos up to provide that more one-to-one help. Sometimes too many people in a room is not a good thing. So we're very excited about this, and we're working hard to get those classrooms staffed. All right. When we look at our behavior programs, which is our best kiddos, we made the decision this year that we were going to mainstream those programs onto two campuses. If you're in the Lake Creek theater pattern, then you would go to Creekside. If you're in the MHS theater pattern, you're going to go to MES. Each of those campuses have three best classrooms dedicated for those students. We're going to start next year off with fourteen of those students that need behavior support in the Creekside and ten in Montgomery Elementary. After the year of implementation, what we realized is we need more additional behavior support on those campuses to support those classrooms and those kiddos. And also our teachers, as those kiddos become, have the ability to move out into general education, our general ed teachers need some support in how to help those kiddos be successful in their classrooms. So the behavior interventionists will be full-time, boots-on-the-ground there, twenty-four-seven, helping that campus with those extreme behavior challenges. When we look at our specialized learning survey results, we were very pleased with the feedback that we had this year. We received one-hundred percent positive feedback in the areas of supervisors being responsive when employees have a concern, that our supervisors are accessible, and that communication is clear and timely and easily understandable. We were at ninety-four percent for a positive place to work, that they feel their supervisors are approachable, and that feedback is valuable in helping them grow. We were at ninety-two to ninety-four percent that would recommend MISD to anyone looking for employment, and that they believe that they have adequate training to be able to meet the expectation and the job requirements that they have.
Can I ask you a quick question?
I'm sorry?
About this real quick?
Yeah.
Were you able to get a high number of the specialized learning teachers and employees to give their input on this? Do we know?
Justin? Do we know, did we have a high number? What was the percentage of special education compared to, you know, was it just my team? Was it special ed teachers? Who?
I have that information, but I don't know it off the top of my head, so I'll get it to you.
Okay. I would say this is fantastic because we've come a long way in the last five years in this area, so.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Yes. And we had eighty-two percent in the area that they feel like they need some more assistance with training and technology within the department, and that they feel like we need a little bit of work with making sure that we're communicating with all of the staff in a timely manner. So my leadership team is already on this. We've met about this, and we're coming up with a plan to try to make sure that our team feels supported in this area. Okay. So just like every district has a report card, right, and accountability, so does special education. And we call these indicators. And not only do we have state accountability for special education, we also have federal accountability. So there are four, there are five basic areas that we have to report on, that we receive report cards every year. The first one is RDA, results-driven accountability. This is federal compliance. They look at over a hundred areas in special education. They look at STAR and EOC. They look at how many students are self-contained, how many go out to general ed, graduation rates. They also look at discipline. In every area, they look at ethnicity and race, and they will balance that out. So the report's about thirty pages long. Then they come up with a determination level for each district, being from a DL zero, being perfect, no need or area of concern, all the way up to a DL four, meaning that TEA is going to get involved, you're going to get an onsite visit, they're going to come in and try to help you turn some areas of concern around. Montgomery continues to meet with a determination level one. That's exactly where we need to be. We look at our report from year to year, and if we have a little area of concern, we will turn around and adjust that and do that at the local level. So we're very proud of that. The next indicators are all state indicators, PEMS, if you will. With eleven A, which is child find, that means, listen, if a student gets referred for special education from the date the parent signs that consent, we have forty-five school days to complete that report. Okay? Then we look at eleven B. Once that report's completed, we have thirty calendar days from the date the report was completed to have an art committee meeting. SPP twelve, early childhood special ed, we have students that we serve even as early as birth, all the way to three years, depending on the disability. We have to evaluate all of these students no later than their third birthday. And then SPP thirteen, that's going to be your transition. Every special education student at the age of fourteen must have a transition plan in their IEP. Keep in mind that these reports are a year behind. So for example, for twenty-one, twenty-two, we're working off of twenty-two, twenty-one data. So in full transparency, you know, Montgomery has struggled with timelines for several years. Three years ago, my team came in, we were all brand-new, and we were hyper-focused on making sure that the district got into compliance. And we did just that. And keep in mind, there is no grace period. If you miss by one day, you're automatically out of compliance. So for twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five, I'm happy to report that we have been one-hundred percent compliant. We just met today, ran our numbers. We're going to again be compliant one-hundred percent going into twenty-five, twenty-six. And this is just a real compliment to our evaluation team and our art facilitators making sure that we are diligent to meet every single timeline because that's what's best for kids.
So I just want to say something about that as well.
Yes.
I just want to make sure everybody understands that it wasn't because people are slacking off.
Oh, no, no, no.
No. Diagnosticians work beyond the amount of hours that is typical of most people, and so there's just so many.
That's right. They were understaffed, they were not able to fill those positions.
Correct.
Absolutely. Yeah. And coming off of COVID as well, and even though we were at home, the federal timeline still stood.
Yep.
And many, many districts were unable to meet those timelines. All right. Okay. In addition to the hundred areas that we talked about a minute ago, the results-driven accountability also looks at the area of discipline, very specifically the area of significant disproportionality. They look to see, is one group of students being disciplined or being removed from classes at a different or a disproportionate rate than their peers? Montgomery is challenged with a couple of areas. Number one, it's out-of-school suspension. For African-American students, we were at four-point-eight. Keep in mind, discipline data is two years behind, so we're working off of twenty-two, twenty-three-year data. And then total removals is the combination of out-of-school suspension, in-school suspension, and DAP removals. We were at two-point-seven percent with African-American, three percent with two or more races. The challenge is, we're working off of two systems. You have state compliance. Chapter thirty-seven under the Texas Education Code says, if you vape at school, if you bring drugs to school, that's a mandatory removal. Federal government says there is no mandatory removal in special education. So federal government says, if your state has a mandatory removal, you can go ahead and do that, but then you are going to take a hit at the federal level because everything's discretionary. So our campus principals and administrators are trying to balance that out. The district wants to be consistent across the board with the student code of conduct, so we're challenged in this area. But we've already begun to have targeted action here. We have contracted with LEEDs, which is leaders and educators, addressing disproportionality in special ed. We've already worked a root cause analysis, a corrective action plan for next year. We're getting ahead of the game. I'm working very closely with the principals to monitor their campuses monthly. We're going to focus on really good MTSS behavior practices and supports to help our teachers know how to work with our behaviorally-challenged students. So we're confident that we're going to be able to get some improvement in this area. So we're confident that we're going to be able to get some improvement in this area. Wanted to explain to the board that it's a very hard balancing act there. And then I wanted to end with just some highlights from our department. We held our second annual parent night this year. We had over 75 parents attend, over 30 vendors. We had some very positive feedback, our parents were really enjoying that. We hosted our fifth annual Mission Possible Field Day. All 11 campuses participated. We had over 100 special ed students participate. And we had 30, over 30 of our general ed students that volunteer in our partners PE come out and help us with that. Our Special Olympics is just our pride and joy. We had 12 cheerleaders compete this year. We had eight students in bocce ball. We had 20 students in track and field. In Montgomery, MARVLES were asked to participate in the special education torch run, so that was really exciting for those students and families. We're adding swimming and tennis next year for our competition in special ed. And our MISD MARVLES cheer squad just continues to be our shining star. They were able to cheer at both the junior and high school, actually all four campuses games. They participated in the Christmas parade and they cheered our parents on as they entered into our parent night. So if you've not had an opportunity to see our MARVLES perform at a football game, I encourage that you do so, it'll just warm your heart. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to give you an update, and I am open to any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Well, thank you so much, all right.
Thank you. Information item number B is Department Update on Communications. Mr. Marino.
Good evening, trustees, Dr. Ruffin. I'm privileged tonight to give an update on our communications department. First, our team is Stephanie Wells, the communications coordinator. Raise your hand, Stephanie. And recently added to the team is Diana Teal. We all know Diana, during her time in technology, we're excited to add her to the team. They're both fabulous. Their work speaks for itself. They're incredibly talented assets to the department and the district, and I'm just, I'm very thankful for both of them. Much of communications work is really driven by Goal Five of the district's strategic plan. So I'll go through each of the, each of the goals within Goal Five, or the performance objectives within Goal Five, and talk about how the communications department's priorities and functions align with our goals under the strategic plan. But these are what I consider really the primary buckets of the communications department's work. So external and internal communications, events, marketing and multimedia production, PR and community engagement, media relations, and fulfilling requests under the Public Information Act. And then I put other duties as assigned because we're a small district and many districts or many folks in our district wear multiple hats. So we try to really fill in wherever we can, whether it's leading a process to name a school or redesigning signage at the athletic stadium. We don't like to say no. We want to step in and assist staff across the district however we can. So first, objective one under Goal Five is to provide opportunities for feedback from staff, parents, and students. We do this through annual town hall meetings, which we hold ourselves accountable in a performance measure to have town hall meetings each year. We support the superintendent when he speaks at parent, staff, and community meetings. We help facilitate the district advisory committee, which we run our academic calendar process through. And we recently partner with a survey vendor called Thought Exchange. That is the platform we use our district-wide survey through this year. An example of a two-way communication is our calendar development process. We have a months-long process that starts each year in August, September, and culminates in us recommending a new calendar in January to the board. So throughout those months, we have multiple opportunities for inputs and a two-way communication between the district and community. Objective two is provide stakeholders with effective external communications frequently throughout the school year. We do this through our social media channels. We have Facebook, X, and Instagram. We launched last year a magazine, a digital magazine called Montgomery Matters. We issued five publications of that last year. Each year, we have various communications campaigns related to what's going on in a given school year. Examples of that are the 2022 Bond. The communications department led up both that and the Prop A in 2024 this year and continuing into next school year. You'll see ongoing communications celebrating the district's centennial year. We help manage the district and campus websites. We organize special events like ribbon cuttings and groundbreaking. We're very excited for the ribbon cutting coming up in July at the Den, where we'll officially open the CTE Center and the Agricultural Science Center. And then media relations, we very much value our partnership with our media partners, especially the Community Impact, who I know is here tonight, so shout out to them. And our government relations, we also value building relationships with our local elected officials to advance the priorities of the district. This is an example of a campaign that our communications department led, developed. You notice the branding is all similar fonts, very recognizable for the community, that it's important to us that when the community sees something from Montgomery ISD, they immediately recognize that is a Montgomery ISD product. Centennial coverage, this will continue throughout the school year. We'll have videos of various individuals, key players in the history of Montgomery ISD, sharing their story of their time, whether they were a student or staff member. So that's been a very exciting campaign. We've had several folks reach out who, you know, went to MHS in the 70s or the 80s and wanted to share photos from their time or a photo of their letter jacket. So that's been a very fun experience for our team. MISD Matters Magazine, this was just, this was a communication, you know, initiative that our communications department talked about years ago, and we just did not, we took a leap last year to produce the magazine, and so shout out to our team for making that happen, another pathway to communicate with the community. Our social media engagement, this is a performance measure in the strategic plan where we are constantly evaluating how to best reach the community through various channels. Social media has clearly been one of those, so this shows the increase in our followers on X, Facebook, and Instagram. Special events and recognitions, these are just a few photos of ribbon cuttings and groundbreakings and the historical marker at MES that we held earlier this year in celebration of the centennial year. Legacy seniors, this is an annual campaign that we push out on social media each school year, really honoring and celebrating students who are seniors that started Montgomery ISD as a kindergartner. And they share, we put it out to all the seniors, and they share their, some of their favorite memories and lessons and their favorite teachers that were memorable throughout their educational experience in the district. And then the MISD Education Foundation, we're proud and honored to support the foundation in highlighting, promoting all the great events that they put on each year, intended to raise funds to give back to our teachers. And then government relations, this is a priority for us, especially during legislative years, is building relationships and collaborating with our state lawmakers. This session, we had a legislative platform that we communicated with Representative Metcalf and Senator Creighton, and we had what I would consider outstanding collaboration with both them and their staffs throughout the session. We provided in-person testimony. Shout out to Sean Dennison for taking the time to go down and testify on school safety legislation. And we provided written feedback on countless numbers of bills, and we appreciate our legislators' openness and willing to listen to our concerns and recommendations. Objective three, provide stakeholders with effective internal communication throughout the school year. We achieve this through a weekly communication every Friday that goes out to all staff called the MISD Minute. We help organize and plan a back-to-school convocation event for staff, sort of to just generate excitement about being back for the new school year. We organize and plan the We Are Montgomery Employees Awards Event at the end of the school year that recognizes our campus, Teachers of the Year, Spirit of Montgomery Award winners and department MVPs. And we communicate various district updates to staff following board meetings or major actions or decisions by the district or board that need to be communicated to staff. We ensure that happens in a timely and clear manner. This is an example of the MISD Minute that goes out each Friday to staff. And then this is, these are photos from last year's convocation. This upcoming August 4th will be our golden year, 2025 convocation. There will be lots of theming around the gold standard will be, employees will shout out throughout the school year their colleagues for exhibiting the gold standard, and that will be our, sort of our theme for the year. Here's a photo of We Are Montgomery Awards Event. We're excited that next year, we plan to hold this event at the CTE Center. And objective four, providing opportunities to build a strong district culture. This is an example. Each year, we have a different theme. For the previous school year, it was impact maker. We, if you walk down the halls of this building and even in classrooms, you'll see posters of folks who are being recognized by their colleagues and peers for going above and beyond or being an impact maker, and then next year, it'll be the gold standard. Here's another example of district culture. And for the second time in three years, we were recognized as an HEB Excellence in Education finalist. We spent an entire day at Oak Hills and Montgomery High School with judges from across the district and had the opportunity to really show off and highlight some amazing things happening in our classrooms. Even on a Friday before spring break, there was active teaching and learning going on. And then objective five, provide multiple opportunities for two-way communication. We achieve this through, as I mentioned previously, our town hall meetings, and we convene groups, community groups throughout the school year to meet with the superintendent at least twice. Realtors, faith leaders, and then our leaders, the leaders of our PTO and PTAs across the district. And these are all generally very well-attended, great participation, and it's just another opportunity for us to get input and feedback from diverse and various perspectives from parents and community members. So what's next? Each year, you know, we meet as a communications team to evaluate what we're doing, what we want to continue, and what new initiatives we want to put forward. So next year, as I mentioned, will be our golden year, that will be the theme of the school year. We plan to continue our education around school finance with our community. We shouldn't, we shouldn't stop providing information when there's not an election, so we're going to continue to make sure that our parents, voters, and folks new to the community are informed about how school finance works in the state of Texas. We'll continue to provide information as we wrap up projects in the 2022 Bond Election and Prop A. We are excited to launch a new initiative, what we're going to call the MISD Premier Partners, where we'll invite various businesses and organizations to board meetings to recognize them for being a partner of our school district. MISD Ambassador's Academy, we plan to invite community members to apply, to come in, have a handful of meetings with district leaders during the school year to learn more about how the district operates, how departments operate, how we're funded, so that we can grow advocates within our school district. Our long-range planning committee will continue meeting to make recommendations on future facility planning. And then we're very excited to open up the Den where we'll be able to market, continue to market and advertise our CTE programs and offerings. And also, we're excited to work with our other department leaders, athletics, child nutrition, maintenance, technology, to really highlight all the great work that happens in those departments as well. Any questions that I can answer?
I just want to say that whenever, going back to 2020, the communications department did not exist, so pretty much everything we all just saw in this slideshow was non-existent. So to see the progress that has been made in five years and how it continues to get better and better, better each year is amazing. And I want to say thank you to the three of you in your department for your hard work and ongoing improvement in this area because it's such an asset for our district.
Thank you for saying that, and thank you all for the trust and investment that you've provided to the communications team.
Thank you, Mr. Marino. Item nine C is Districtwide Stakeholder Survey Results. Looks like you're staying around?
Privileged to present some high-level results from the district-wide survey. This year, we used Thought Exchange, which was a transition from our previous survey vendor, Let's Talk. We had participation that was fairly in line with previous year's participation through the Let's Talk platform. You'll see the percentage of folks and total number of participants, and the percentage breaks down here. This survey opened in April, late April, and it was conducted through mid-May. I do want to preface a few considerations before we get into some of the data. And we can't go through all the data tonight because we'd be here till 2:00 in the morning, but for purposes of this presentation, I'm going to give you the strategic plan, key performance indicators, those that required survey data. And I'll mention this later in the presentation, but we'll also put the information on the district website. But the previous district-wide survey that we're comparing data to was conducted in October of 2023, so that was quite a bit of a gap between the previous survey and this year's survey, and it was on a different platform. So they, those two items may have had an impact on year-to-year results in terms of tracking. And then there were a handful of key performance indicators in the strategic plan that were added that this year's survey provided a baseline for. So here's some common threads in the survey feedback that we got back. What's different about the survey platform we use this year is we're able to better glean through the open-ended response. The platform had a more sophisticated use of artificial intelligence for us to get, see key trends, what was identified as strengths and growth areas submitted through the open-ended responses. But a few were MISD prioritizes great teachers, reasonable class sizes, and safety of our kids. A positive learning environment maximizes student achievement. A parent mentioned that help to students in need of additional assistance in classes. And a teacher mentioned that keeping our teachers happy and appreciated is a priority. In Goal Two, as a reminder, Goal One, all the key performance indicators are driven by assessment, so there are no survey, there are no KPIs in Goal One that require district-wide survey. So in Goal Two, percentage of parents that report experiencing a safe and secure school environment, that came in at 64%. And again, that's one of those areas that we're investigating as to why that drop. Could have been a number of reasons, but through this platform, we'll be able to pull information to see what may have been the cause for that decrease. Then percentage of staff that report safe and secure school environment, that is at 80%. And then percentage of students reporting a safe and school, secure, safe and secure school environment, we aim to increase that number by 3% annually. The last survey report was 96%, this came in at 86. Continuing with Goal Two, customer service of the police department will be at 90% annually. This came in at 87%. And then continuing Goal Two, percentage of students reporting mental health needs are being met will increase by 3% annually. That came in at 64%. And the following two are new key performance indicators. Teachers and students feeling behaviors addressed appropriately. Teachers and students feeling behaviors addressed appropriately will increase by 3% annually. That came in at 87% as a baseline for teachers, and 52% as a baseline for students. And then teachers reporting that they have received effective training on behavior and classroom management, that came in at 66%.
Hey, Mr. Marino, I want to jump in real quick, because like, these two KPIs are essentially establishing a new baseline, right? Because we didn't have data that supported those specific focus questions. But really, as you see, we go through this data, and you'll see these drops from 73% to 64%. And I think it is important to keep in mind, though we look into these numbers and dig into how can we improve, some of these others are also kind of establishing a new baseline. Because if you think of taking a, a survey in October, and I've got two and a half months to form my opinion and cast my vote as to, do I feel like we're at this level versus this year, we took this in May, April, May, they've got an entire school year. So really, our data now is really more indicative of a comprehensive assessment of the school year length of time and how people are feeling at that point, versus a snapshot in October, when there's only been three months of things to come up, things to walk through, deal with, to gauge some of these opinions. So this is really, really valuable data. We're excited to be able to dive off into it and figure out how we can improve and make progress.
Goal Three, which is District Operations, customer satisfaction and child nutrition will be at 50% annually among students. That came in at 55%. I think as long, as long as we continue the orange chicken, Brad, that number will continue to climb. And customer satisfaction in the technology, technology department will be at 85%, and that came in right at the number. Continuing with Goal Three, MISD transportation satisfaction came in at 87%. Our goal is 90%. Maintenance department came in at 75%. Again, that goal was 90%. And then child nutrition among parents and staff, the goal was 80%. That came in at 72% for parents and 85% for staff. Human capital, or Goal Four, addressing human capital. Percentage of employees that report the district is a positive place to work, that came in at 83%. Employees indicating that they have been provided training to meet their job requirements will increase by 3%. That came in at 77. And the number of employees reporting access to professional growth opportunities came in at 69%. And Goal Five, addressing communications and customer service. Parents reporting satisfaction with clarity of district communication came in at 90% right at the goal. And then percentage of employees reporting satisfaction with clarity came in at 96% above the goal of 90. And the number of employees reporting a positive culture, we aim for that, that to be at 85%, and that is at 92%. Parents reporting that district leadership is transparent in their communication, that came in at 87%. We're striving to, to reach 90%. And then employees reporting that district leadership is transporta, or is transparent in their communication, came in at 90%, or I'm sorry, 89%. And then parent, percentage of parents reporting satisfaction with district's customer service cadence came in at 89%. So perceived strengths through the, the district, based on the open-ended responses and the overall data, safety and security, responsive staff members, access to technology, overall positive environment, and effective communication came in as the top five identified strengths of the district. We asked a question, an open-ended response, what our community felt the district's priorities over the next three to five years should be. And teacher pay and retention came in at number one. School safety and student behavior, overcrowding and class sizes, addressing that. Growth and infrastructure, how to, how to manage our, our, the capacity of our buildings as, as we continue to see enrollment, enrollment growth, and then communication and transparency. Next steps, we don't want to sit back and admire the strengths and admire the challenges, so our leadership teams on the district and campus level are going through the data to identify opportunities for growth for the next school year. They'll, this, that information will inform our leaders as to create action plans for '25, '26. Well, they're, they'll report their findings to campus and district staff when, when they return for the next school year. And then information on campus-level results and district-level results will be posted on the district's website this week.
Any questions?
I just have one. So with this new program, in the areas that like declined in score, I guess, does this new program allow us to find, is that common themes, like are there opening comments after each section that we'll allow?
Yes. So if you, for those, thank you to everybody who took the time to provide responses. There were many more open-ended responses in, in this year's survey than there were previously, because of the platform gives us better tools and abilities to go through and pull out key trends and themes from what those open-ended responses were.
But they're, they can get down to the specific departments that?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And when does the next survey go out?
The next survey? We'd like to keep some consistency moving forward, because we did a spring survey this year. Our goal would be to do another spring survey next year.
Justin, I think I saw only about 20% of employees took the survey. Was that, was that the right number?
Yeah.
Is there any way we can, I mean, I think it's important that we should have that number up a little higher.
Absolutely.
So maybe something, something to focus on for this next survey for the spring of '26.
I definitely, I agree with that, and we're, we're constantly evaluating how, what, what we can do better next year in, in communicating how, how the survey gets put out and the time it takes.
So there's no feedback on why that low percentage?
I don't, so that, it's a lower, it's a, it's a low percentage in the grand scheme of, of things. It's fairly consistent with what we see every year, maybe a little bit lower. There was, there were many more questions, open-ended, that takes time. So we'll be intentional next year about how we communicate.
One thing I'll say also is, we have just presented the expectation to our campus principals, because some of these were just really focused on campus-specific feedback. In the past, the feedback has, has kind of been, I don't want to say hoarded, but kind of hoarded. But our campus leaders will be taking the feedback specific to their campus, and actually getting in front of their staff and saying, here's the feedback you gave me. I'm owning it. Maybe it's great, maybe it's areas of improvement, ha, helped me get better. And so I think that step of utilizing the feedback and saying, folks here, is the folks that shared, here's what you shared, reiterates the value and importance of actually completing the survey, so hopefully that'll, that'll increase some of that participation also.
I have one comment, and it's on the school safety and security. It seemed like every one of those categories, we went down, and I, I would only ask that we dig into that a little deeper to figure out why we, and, and that area is so important that we figure out what's, what's going on there. If it is the, the fall versus the spring survey, or if there's any validity to what they're telling us.
When we talked about that in our leadership meeting, and, and there may be some aspect of that that is just unknown, because there are so many things built into our safety and security approach that aren't necessarily known. Things like the web filtering, the number of drills that we're doing. We can do a better job of, of highlighting the things that are there. Coming up this August, we'll have the, the much more comprehensive silent panic alarm technology, so that piece will be a huge step forward, because everyone will know and see that as the teacher has a button on them that, that always points back to safety and security. So there's, there's things I think in the works for that, but you're right.
How, how much do we think that the cell phone policy plays into that? I'm looking at the percentage of parents that were reporting there. It's down.
Yeah. I don't know. It's a good question.
There were overall, that was, there was an open-ended question we asked about the cell phone policy, and overall, that was very positive feedback on that.
Any other questions?
How many total people took the survey?
About 3,300.
Man, need to start giving some of that orange chicken away for some...
And that 20%, Paul, is 20% of total respondents to the survey. 628 employees is actually more than 20% of our total employees.
Right, so I was going to make that clarification. We have 1,200 employees, so half of our employees took the survey, but of the respondents, employees were 20% of the respondents.
That's a great sample size that we got.
Glad we went back to that slide.
Okay. One last comment on the, kind of going along with safety and security, the slide about the mental health of our children. That was kind of, that was down as well, from what I recall. So I just want to make sure that we, we focus at that and look at, look at, a theme, is there a common theme there, you know? Yeah, right there, so, thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I hate to even ask that of you, but is there a way to pull that data for us to see what the themes, and just overall themes that y'all find when y'all start analyzing it a little bit more?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marino. Item nine D is feasibility study of land purchase.
All right, so yes, we are currently under contract to purchase a tract of property here on 1097, and part of that contract is a feasibility period where we get the chance to bring in engineers and experts to assess that land. And so we are actually set to close, I think, here in the next couple of weeks on that. And so this is Casey Sledge with Sledge Engineering. He headed up all the feasibility, and so he's just here to give us an overview of the, that analysis, and go for it. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, School Board and Dr. Ruffin. My name's Casey Sledge with Sledge Engineering. Very happy to be here tonight. So we were engaged to take a look at this property, like Dr. Ruffin pointed out, the Ogre Chalk site, as we're calling it. So just to start off with, this is a feasibility report, just for the public and anyone watching everything we're going to show you. These are not actual plans. We have some concept plans for you to, to look at. We're just trying to see how suitable this property is, so that's what all this is about. To do that, we need to really think through what the future possibilities might be. All right, moving on forward, so actually, the full report that exists, this is an engineered report, you can see the cover page right there. The entire report with all the appendices and sub-reports in it is over 300 pages long. I would really enjoy talking to you tonight about all 300 pages, but sadly, we've only got time for maybe about 30 of those pages. So we're going to just go right to the overview of this site. But I say that to let you know, there's been a lot of, there's a lot of background data done. Very happy with the level of detail we were able to pull from the property, and wanted to show you some of the things that we look at for anyone thinking about the district going through a land purchase. To me, it's really a risk management decision, and so we're trying to figure out what the, the risk would be for you, or the, you know, possible pros and cons, what might happen, again, to see how suitable this site is. And to do that, we want to try to get ahead of any surprises. So just a pulled-back view of your entire district. You can see, this property is just right in the heart of the, the boundary, so that's a, that's nice. Zooming on in, here's an aerial shot, just to get us started. The entire track is everything outlined in blue there. There's some, some floodplain in the middle that's about nine and a half acres. I'm going to give you some detail on that in just a second. Just a little bit different view, that is the actual FEMA floodplain overlay, to give you the regulatory view of that floodplain. And you see this kind of an odd-shaped property, and we've got a couple of different frontages. You've probably all driven by the property, maybe on both roads. So FM 1097 is the road, is the primary road, the highway down there. And then you can also access the property, particularly the west side, from Summit Park Drive, which is a dead-end road. There were actually multiple parcels of land that put this track together. If you go pull the appraisal district data, you'll see something that looks like this in the, the property. So it was a couple of different Ogre Chalk tracks pieced together. Just let you know that that's how we got to this point. So if you get your hands on that 300-page report and have some good weekend reading, you can just go right to the front of it. There's an executive summary that really gives you the, the whole outlook. So it's a 73 and a half acre track. We find the track is suitable for basically any type of campus, except really a high school. It's not impossible to put a high school there, but it does only out too well for that. Elementary, intermediate, middle, specialty campus, operations, maintenance, admin, a lot of possibilities, so that's really good. Some sites are just too small to be practical for these things. This site's particularly unique that it has a creek going through it, and that creek gives you some interesting opportunities. You could have two separate uses, you could connect those. I'll show you how we might do that. As I mentioned, there's nine and a half acres of floodplain, giving you an effective net of about 64 acres, assuming we don't mitigate some floodplain, and I'll, I'll show you how you could do that later. There's utilities available of all types. That is a rare thing that we would state to you. As we look at other properties for you, we're not going to say that very often, so that's a, that's a big deal. You've got water, sewer, electric, gas, all quite available, so that's really good. There's plenty of good roadway access, there's some concerns with traffic we'll talk about, there's a thoroughfare plan we need to zoom in on. But the punchline is this last statement at the bottom. Assuming the county and city's future thoroughfare plan for the site, and I'll show you a map, assuming that location works out to the benefit of MISD, we find this to be a really favorable site. So there's your punchline, we like this property. So here's a conceptual layout. This is not what you are supposed to do, but it's to give you some scale. We're purposely using ovals and round shapes to give you some idea. The scale of this is accurate based on campuses you have in the district, so your middle school campuses net out to that acreage, elementary campuses net out to that acreage. We just dropped an elementary on the west side, a middle school on the east side, showed you how big ball fields are, just to let you know, wow, things could actually fit up there. There would probably be onsite detention requirements and things like that. We didn't get that far into the detail, but all of that should fit fine. The tan lines are just one concept of how we might have roadway connectivity. You can see, we've dropped in two driveways for each side, so each campus in this case, and even included a connecting driveway across that creek. We, we think that's quite feasible to do. You don't have to do it, but it does open up a lot of good potential safety improvements when you have campus traffic, particularly parents going from one campus to another, or buses, things like that. So I think that's a real possibility, actually walk through there. It's floodplain, so there's certain things that have to happen, but, but we think you can pull that off. We did get a full boundary survey done. The district hired Quiddity Engineering to pull this off. It's complete and stamped. There's the full boundary, there's a lot of title work done as well. And just a snapshot, they did a full topo for us, so a topography map is done, it's one-foot topo out there. It's heavily treeed, they used LiDAR, or laser data from, from up high to get all of the data, but it's a really good survey, very happy with the end results of that. So just letting you know, we have that. On the title, this is still an active research being done by district's legal team, but there was just one notable thing in the report that we thought was worth mentioning that was a little unique. There is a four-acre drill site listed in the title, and right now, all that means is someone might have a claim to that. I think we're working to have that claim relinquished and going away, or your legal team is. But in the meantime, just to point out to you, again, I want to give you all your risk here, that four-acre site is almost entirely in the floodplain down in the creek. It's, this is a quite old document. I, I don't know that we have anybody with an idea to actually do a drill site out there. It just came up in the title search. If someone does have the right, I guess they could drill there, they'd have to get a FEMA permit to do that. That is not impossible, it could happen. I don't see it likely. Even if it did happen, I don't see it affecting the ability for you to have campuses here. So just want to point out, that's something that was found that's notable. Just some data highlights for you. The jurisdiction, City of Montgomery, you're within the city limits here. There's a quick listing of their building codes and electrical code. ESD number two does your fire protection out in this area. Texas Department of Transportation controls FM 1097, and the city controls the other side street over there. Interestingly, there are no filed CCNs for water or wastewater service. All that means, CCN is Certificate of Convenience and Necessity, that's where the state keeps the data on who has the right to serve water or wastewater. It doesn't really mean much for you here, the City of Montgomery's serving the area with both water and wastewater, they don't need a CCN. That just means there's no competing interest to serve the site. If there was no service, it would be more interesting. Because you're in the city limits, you're zoned, you're currently zoned industrial, what they call the ID zone, industrial district zone. Ideally, you would change the zoning to institutional, that would probably make the city quite happy. I would recommend that you do what I call a friendly rezoning, to try to change that to institutional. Uh, I would recommend that you do what I call a friendly rezoning, to try to change that to institutional. Uh, however, I wanna point out to you, uh, the State of Texas has upheld, uh, numerous times, uh, that if you're, if you're in an incorrect zoning, that cities are not to stop the construction of reasonable schools. So as a risk management point of view, I'm not too worried about you building, I, I believe you can build legally in the zone as it sits, but I would suggest you consider changing the zoning, just to, to, to play along nicely, if that makes sense to everybody. Uh, there were no zoning restrictions, uh, in either of these zones that really bothered us on, on build, the build, uh, constructability of the site. Uh, here's a shot of the zoning map, the star on the upper left-hand side is, is this tract, uh, just showing you that in the industrial zoning, and that you are indeed in the city limits. So one of the things that, uh, we've heard about, as we're talking to folks around about the property, is drainage. Uh, our first site visit out there, it didn't take us long to see some erosion downstream. Uh, so I'm sure everyone's, uh, familiar with that, so I thought I would try to build your confidence a little bit on what could happen on this property. Uh, so the picture right here, I'm standing on FM ten ninety-seven, out of traffic, uh, looking upstream, I'm looking at this property. You've probably driven by and seen all the trees, but you can just tell from this photo, it's actually silting up on that side. Now, Tech dot recently did some improvements down there, uh, the culverts I'm standing on, those round pipes, you can see them kinda sticking out on the downstream side. Uh, and that helped, I think they're trying to just protect their roadway, and we did talk to Tech dot about that. But the major point I wanna make for you is, uh, you know, I'm not trying to talk either way about the projects downstream, I think there's a lot going on downstream. I just wanna talk big picture with you about land development and drainage. Our opinion is, if you will strongly consider keeping this track in a natural drainage state, that is, keep the natural vegetation as much as you can, I think you'll find it quite beneficial and, and rather simple to take care of that drainage channel, if that can be done. If you urbanize this drainage channel, 'cause you end up developing it very heavily, that can be done as well, but you would generally have to totally harden the creek, uh, picture like a fully concrete channel, if you will, you've seen those in maybe some big city applications. That, that is doable. I'm not currently thinking that's where I would recommend you go. I think you have plenty of acreage out there, particularly with the concepts we're throwing at you, where you can leave the creek natural. And therefore, it's a lot easier for you, you don't have to do so much. There might be some, uh, armoring, you have to do the creek. But just to illustrate the point, I'm gonna get, I wanna diverge just a little bit. So here's the same area, I'm looking downstream, you've probably all driven this road and seen some of this, this is a couple of months old, it might be worse today. So I'm standing on the new culvert, looking downstream, you can see all the scour and erosion happening, right? Here's an aerial from about two thousand and four, just did a little research. Where I've got the words "natural vegetation" there. Uh, look how it's all green and there's trees and everything, and this is all pre-development, of course, some of you, some of you were probably here when, when that was going on. There's our track, our track is over there on the left. Uh, let's jump up about a decade to two thousand and fifteen, the vegetation gets removed, and I wasn't around, I'm just looking at data, uh, to, to figure this out. And you can see some channelization happening with those developments down there. So that vegetation's been removed, and really, jumping up to today, so a year-old aerial photo, you can just see the scour's been continuing. Uh, I, I just bring that, uh, information to you to let you know that if you can keep drainage in a natural state, it should be a lot easier to deal with, that's really all. You don't have to, but that's our thinking for you, uh, so I don't have a whole drainage project in mind for you. Uh, and as long as Tech dot continues to take care of FM ten ninety-seven, which they, they've done pretty good, uh, I don't have any reason to think this scour would cross over that road and come upstream. Okay, so there's our lesson on drainage scour and staying natural. Uh, here's a shot back on property of the FEMA map, uh, so the, the Federal Emergency Management Agency floodplain maps. Uh, the dash lines in red are floodway, uh, that's highly regulated. It's not impossible to encroach in the floodway, but pretty much we don't wanna do that, that takes a lot of work, and a lot of times you don't get permission. Uh, the blue area represents the hundred-year floodplain fringe, that's outside of the floodway, but still in the one-hundred-year floodplain. You can mitigate that by putting fill in there, I don't see that you need to do that, you have plenty of acres all around this, and again, you'd take out a lot of trees if you did it. And then the tan areas represent the five-hundred-year floodplain, uh, not too concerned about those areas. Any building you do, you just wanna keep it a foot or two above all of those elevations, which does not look to be difficult at all. Uh, we have water, sewer, electric and gas, um, uh, out on property, there's just some shots out there, you can see the infrastructure out there. We have talked to all the providers at some level, we've talked to the city quite a bit. Um, and so we're real confident that you're in strong position on, uh, utilities. Let's talk traffic, though. So this is the same, uh, layout, those are, these proposed driveway layouts, again, just conceptual, just showing you how you might do this with campus circulation in mind. There's a lot of configurations here, I do like the idea of connecting across the creek, if you develop both sides, it would give you a chance to get better access. So on FM ten ninety-seven on the right, Tech dot controls that, you'd have to get an access permit from them, you would be able to get an access permit, we've talked to them about that. Uh, what I think of, though, is left turns coming in and out of the campus. If you have a large campus, particularly, you would wanna, uh, have protected left turns coming in and out, basically a traffic signal. Uh, probably could use one today on several of these driveways through that area. Uh, Tech dot will not tell you, they'll give you a signal or not, you have to do a project, go through signal warrant studies, and then, uh, they'll let you know if that happens. I can easily envision there would, uh, you, you would warrant a signal on ten ninety-seven at one of those driveway locations over there. Uh, there's no guarantee Tech dot would let us put a signal in. I do like that we have the ability to get over to Summit Park Drive if we cross the creek, just in case we don't get a signal, or if there's a delay in that happening. There are currently no plans to signalize anything on FM ten ninety-seven in the area, according to Tech dot. Uh, so just talking to their staff, or at least not very close to the site. But also, we discovered, there's a city thoroughfare plan that's adopted and a county thoroughfare plan that's adopted. They're identical for our campus, so I'll just, uh, use them both interchangeably. Zooming right into that plan, so if you can see our tract with the blue outline and the, and the star right there. So there shows to be, you know, y'all may know about this, there shows to be a future plan, a future thoroughfare crossing this Ogre Chalk tract. Uh, I like the concept from a thoroughfare plan standpoint, I understand the idea that we're connecting basically eastern ten ninety-seven over to essentially western ten ninety-seven, the concept is solid, it makes sense to me. Uh, that rough location makes some sense as well. Where the purple dash line is drawn, and this is from the county's thoroughfare plan, uh, that would be in a bad spot, it would cut our eastern track right in two, so we don't want it right there. Now, these are conceptual, for sure, so you, our advice to you is pretty obvious, just make sure you control that location and either move it, I would say probably to the north, or potentially to the south, just freeing up some room, uh, on the, uh, the property, whoops. Go back. This is really the only key item we have, if you could not control it, and the county decided this should split the middle of that eastern track, for example, and they had a project in mind, uh, like they were actively pursuing a right-of-way acquisition and whatnot, well, that could really affect your ability to develop the site. So, uh, it's a, it's important, but, uh, I do think you guys have some great relationships with the county, I think staff's been talking to them, so I think you're ahead of this already. If you feel comfortable with that, I think you got a great property here. Does that make sense? That thoroughfare location? Wrapping up, uh, I won't go in all these details, but there's a bunch of reports at the back that are quite important. We did a full, uh, environmental site assessment, Rowden Consulting was engaged by the district. Uh, the summary is, no evidence of any environmental conditions on property, did a full wetland determination report, uh, no wetlands on property. Happy to report that. Uh, that means we were not expected to need a federal permit to do work in the creek. Uh, there's another process to make sure of that later, but that's a great sign. Uh, did a full archaeological assessment, uh, what is that? Uh, this is where you review antiquities and send an archaeologist, Indiana Jones-style, uh, out there to do shovel digs. They did a hundred and thirty-six shovel tests in the dirt, so, uh, it's a lot of work. Uh, they're in the trees, you can't see them, but there's a, the report's got every location dig, uh, it shows everything they found. They always find flint and arrowheads and bowls and things like that, and they found them on this site, but they were not of historical, historical significance. Uh, state law does require that school districts do this type of work on any track larger than five acres, so that's why we did the report. Also, uh, state law, make sure we clear this with the Texas Historical Commission, and they can't read that, but we've already got the letter back from the Texas Historical Commission, you are clear to build if you were to acquire this site and do some work on the site. So that's big. Uh, what you don't wanna do is be in the middle of construction and have the Historical Commission come stop you and halt your project, and you make the headlines that way. Uh, last couple of things, a full biological assessment was done by Rowden, this is for endangered species, no habitat was found, so it would not be considered a taking, in their opinion. Uh, and finally, for you, just to throw you some budget considerations, uh, we're not commenting on the price of the property for you, that's not, not our role. But we wanted to give you some ideas of the off-property items, uh, and let me just clarify some of this, this is not what a school would cost, or a driveway, or anything. This is basically to get your site what I would call shovel-ready, like we're just ready to go put a building up. And we've made a few assumptions that are pretty big, so let me explain. The top item, uh, plating, rezoning, doing some geotech, uh, borings on site, uh, and we've seen enough borings in your area, we don't anticipate any surprises there. Uh, traffic evaluation, maybe a tree survey, uh, that's at the top, uh, in a devaluation effort. The next item is some assumptions we put together on getting utilities just across roads and, and really prepared. Not through the property, but get them to the property correctly. Uh, that's probably a, that is a conservative estimate, it's probably not that bad. Uh, the biggest item on here is the assumption that we would have a Tech dot, uh, traffic signal going in that you paid for entirely, that's the assumption. Hopefully you wouldn't, uh, including a deceleration light, and so some pretty conservative numbers for that, at, at about eight hundred thousand for those two things. Uh, again, I, I'm not telling you that's a requirement for the site, I'm just saying it would be a realistic, realistic expectation. You might want to do that if you developed a large enough campus, and they allowed you to do it, and they didn't help you pay for it. Uh, but again, trying to point that out, and then some site cleanup and some contingency puts us at about one point eight million. So the summary is, the cost of the land plus one point eight million conservatively, it's probably not that bad, would be the total expected cost for this land acquisition for, to be shovel-ready, that's our advice to you. And the very last thing is just that last paragraph, our suggestion is to consider it a favorable site, pending locating that thoroughfare plan accordingly. And, uh, list of all those reports, if you want them. Any questions?
How much acreage is, in the event that that thoroughfare does come through there, how much acreage is north of that?
Uh, I, I don't know exactly, but I would speculate that that might be as much as a one hundred or one hundred and twenty-foot wide right-of-way. Uh, and it, it just says thoroughfare on their plan, I, I don't know if it's, if they have a specified width, but that would probably turn into, uh, maybe, maybe three acres or so. I just, we made a quick guess on where it might go, depending on its shape.
But north of that, not the, not what the easement would be, but north of that?
It divides it.
It divides, yeah.
Let me go back. So north of that purple line?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's substantial, that's, like, that's about twenty-five acres north of that line. I mean, right where that one is shown. Like, whoever drew this map, and it's a zoomed-out map, I mean, they, it just happened to split almost right there. And you can see they lined up to the western, that western ten ninety-seven, I think that was the only logic. We've done quite a bit of thoroughfare planning, and it is normal to just draw square rectangular lines at planning level. They often go to property lines and whatnot. It just, that does not, in my opinion, that does not seem to be a specified exact location, it's just connecting west to east. But that's also very important, if they do put it right there, it's, it's gonna affect.
And I've had, uh, we've met with, um, Commissioner Walker, um, last, this spring, last fall, sometime. Um, and we discussed this, and going back, you mentioned, like, we've got great relationships with them, and we've actually already presented that we're purchasing that property, um, or we're going under contract on that property, and we would be interested in having discussions about how to route that, and he said us exactly that, like, we've, we've put this here as a planning stage right now. They've also got a plan on, you know, landowners and making it work. Uh, so having dialogue now at those early conversa, uh, early points of planning is great. And also, on the zoning piece of it, uh, Mayor Countryman and I have been in conversation about getting it rezoned to the industri, institutional.
Institutional.
Um, and I think that's actually on their upcoming, uh, not tonight, I mean, tonight, but at their upcoming, uh, city council meeting.
Oh, excellent, that's great news. Yeah, but, but, by, by my estimation, that dash line goes right through that middle school oval, just to give you some zoomed-in scale on that. It's about the last place I'd want us to go, you know, it's, south might work out, I think north might work out, but some critical thinking needs to go into that. It, and frankly, it, it could turn into a very real positive, safe move. That may become the primary access, it may be much safer, or at least in addition to FM ten ninety-seven, so it, it just makes the site that much better, if done right.
Quick question for you, you talked a lot about the drainage, um, there, obviously, we see that creek going right through the middle. Um, do we still need to have retention, uh, ponds, if you will, or will be able to, will the drainage be able to be routed into that creek?
It's a great question, do we still need detention ponds? So, uh, my current understanding of, and that we've not asked the city that question intentionally, but we've looked at it. Uh, uh, we've got a, a great understanding of city requirements and, and detention ponds. My city engineering opinion, if I were the city engineer, I'm not, uh, I have been, but not here, uh, would be, uh, I think there's a strong advantage to not detain water on this site so close to the creek. From a big-picture point of view, it's often good to let the local water get the creek and get out. So if I were developing your site, I would probably make that appeal to the city, they may or may not receive that appeal. Currently, I would assume they're gonna require detention outside of the floodplain on the site, probably up in the front driveway area. But, but there's room, I'm not, I'm not too concerned about that.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
And I just wanna highlight that this is a, uh, part of the bond in twenty twenty, to set aside money, uh, to purchase land. And so, uh, if, if a question is, is brought to me tomorrow, okay, so now what campus are we building on this property? We don't know, we don't know, but currently, right now, in order to build Creekside, we had to go and purchase that property and then build the property, or then build the campus at the same time. We're, we're really trying to be diligent in the planning, um, in making it as flexible as possible for our district as we grow to, to secure sites and future campus sites that are as, as convenient, essentially located, uh, and, and as flexible as possible. And so that's the, that's the approach to this, and I'm excited, it's, it's come back to be a great, a great location.
Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you.
Item nine E, you got exactly two point, two minutes, Brad. Bond update.
All right, good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Ruffin, Board of Trustees. So, um, quick update on our bond projects, um, it's an exciting summer for us, uh, it's a busy summer for us. All in all, um, we got our hands in really every school except for Montgomery Elementary, um, this summer. Uh, we've got a little bit of work going on at, at a few campuses, but a lot of work going on on others. Scroll through this pretty quick, in the eleven categories, um, this is a screen or a, a page we put up each time. Um, you can see those lines are getting more and more green, right? Um, we're now what I would consider a hundred percent of Lake Creek, finished punched out, finished everything in there, a few minor items left. Uh, Creekside's at ninety-nine percent, um, with the Trazo flooring, which we'll discuss here in a little bit, I'll go over that. CTE's moved up to ninety-eight, um, and that's a general summary of that. We, we have, we have occupied the CTE center, so we have, uh, staff in there. Uh, so the two coordinators, um, the, and the director and their admin assistant is in that building. Uh, so we had furniture put in, it's ready to go, we've got, uh, technology working on that, so, um, the Ag Barn's lagging a little bit behind, but it's catching up pretty quick. MHS renovations has made some jumps this week, and stadium as well, um, and the renovations at the triplets, um, tagging along, but getting there, and the fuel center, rains hurt us there, but it's, uh, it's coming along. So far, we spent two hundred and forty million dollars of that bond. Creekside, um, Trazo, with the Trazo update on that, um, I think, uh, Dr. Ruffin provided a, a summary in the last update to you guys, um, on, uh, what we were doing with the Trazo there, so, um, you guys know the story about, uh, when we first, uh, closed on, on the, on, on the building. Um, as we progressed throughout the year, we noticed some cracking, we noticed some cracking even at closing of some of the Trazos and locations. There were some theories behind what was happening there. It got to the point where we contacted POG and said, "We feel like this is an unacceptable item." Um, and we went in discussions with them, uh, with Huckabee and, uh, involved in that as well, and, um, uh, they agreed and, um, offered us some options, so the options that they were, um, offering us at the time, um, were, uh, the options of tearing out the Trazo completely and putting it back in, uh, throughout the entire building. They would be willing to do a, uh, an option of LVT, uh, and Trazo mix in there. And then, uh, the other option, um, was a, uh, what's called an epoxy overlay, epoxy Trazo overlay, and it's a Trazo product, so it has- it has rock in it, or aggregate in it, but instead of cement, a cementitious product, it's an epoxy holding it together, harder, stronger. We already have that product in, in, well, the entryways at Creekside, but also at Oak Hills and Keenan, that is, that, that product is in there. So what we decided to do, and we didn't take this decision lightly, Dr. Ruffin and I spent a lot of time on the phone with different people, contacted Huckabee, Huckabee, who's kind of the mediator by contract in this, in this process, sat down with all of us, reviewed some of the options, I contacted Southern Tile and Trazo, who's the installer of the Trazo, the cementitious Trazo at our CTE Center, and then also actually worked with Casey in this, and through all the options, the recommendation was to do the epoxy overlay on this, with a crack isolation membrane, and to mitigate any possible future movement there. So Andriola was the original installer of this product, Dr. Ruffin and I got on the phone with him, Dr. Ruffin asked some point-blanks, is, we have, we wanna make sure that, that you guys know that we want this done right, and had a conversation with them. Per the contract, we do have to offer the contractor and the original installer an opportunity to mitigate this and to correct it, and that's what we're doing here. So we chose this option, the progress on this, in, in talking with everybody, one of the questions I had is that subbase that was down there, okay, because there's a sand cushion in Trazo, and then there's a cement little coating on top, so there's this like four-inch-thick stuff of a cementitious kind of sand bed thing, and my concern was, we did cores, we did bores on that, we had them look at it, and I had Southern Tile and Trazo look at it and said, would you install a Trazo, an epoxy overlay on this, and Southern Tile said, that subbase is fine to install this on there. Andriola agreed, Huckabee signed off on that, and, and agreed that this was the, an option we think would be the best situation for the district. So one of the main reasons is it can get done this summer, and that's the only reason, but was one of the main reasons. And the epoxy product compared to LVT is a 50-year, a lot longer product, LVT is gonna have to be replaced probably after 20 years in there, so we wanted to get an item that was as comparable to what was there before as we have now. The progress they're making right now, I've made it a point, and Huckabee has made it a point, and I've asked them to go out there with their field guy to visit this site every day. He goes out there, gives us field reports, I go out there every day, there's been maybe one day that I've missed, I go out there, check on the site, they're making progress. One of the main things I wanna make sure is they had enough protection up, there's a lot of teacher stuff in there, putting, you can see the plastic in this. So in this past three weeks, where they are right now is they started in the classroom corridors, and they have actually poured, they put the, the, the crack isolation membrane, which is a product that has the flexibility and it absorbs cracks and movements with a certain amount of elasticity, I'm not an engineer, don't pretend to be, but that elasticity, it absorbs. Andriola has, has installed this product, Southern Tile and Trazo has installed it as well, over the top of Trazo, concrete, anything, and oftentimes, they have cracks in that. So right now, they've done the classroom corridors, they have put the crack isolation membrane in the cafeteria, the middle section has the vapor barrier membrane that is below the crack isolation on there, and anywhere there was a crack, we've documented, they put a fiber mesh on there, along with an epoxy, filled the cracks with that epoxy, went back over the top of this, made it very sturdy and hardened in there. So this is kind of the progress, we, we anticipate that they will be done with this, their, their substantial completion date is gonna be mid-July to late July, July 30th was the drop, like, we have to have it done by July 30th, and they can meet that deadline.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Sure.
What is, who's the subcontractor performing this portion?
Andriola.
The same contractor that?
Yes.
So do we have a third-party inspector that's checking this every step of the way to make sure that? My concern is that they're trying to mitigate damages, and they're gonna sidestep, you know, so we need somebody that's gonna go in there and go, yeah, this is done right, or this is done to specs, or to scope, or whatever it may be. Right now, we've got the, the same contractor that screwed it up the first time is going in to make the repairs, and I, I just feel like we need some oversight.
So POG is the oversight for this site with making sure that they follow specs, along with Huckabee, and their field guy goes in and makes sure that there, there's very specific specifications, especially of the crack isolation membrane, of a 40 mil thickness, I had them document everywhere they put it, with the gauge on top of it, that that mil thickness is on top of it. But as far as third, third-party?
POG was the one overseeing the original installation, right? So, I mean, it would stand to reason if they didn't catch that the first time, I mean, we should probably have somebody check into this.
And Huckabee is also doing, you said they're doing the daily, they're out there daily, chronicling the progress.
Making sure the specs and the, and the submittal, all submittals have gone through them, and they're reviewing all submittals, and they're making sure that they're building it stage by stage as the submittal and specs indicate.
What kind of warranty will we be getting?
So typically, it's a one-year warranty, we asked in the negotiations for a two-year warranty, they, they gave us that.
Okay. How, this is going over the existing Trazo that was there, correct?
Right.
So how is that affecting everything in like a door jam, all of those areas?
That's a great question, so one of the things that, obviously, the, the most doorways and thresholds we have are in classrooms, right? And so the carpet and the, and the epoxy before was an even mix, right? So a couple of options we had through, some submittals were reviewed, were a Schluter strip, rubber inlay to kind, you'll see those sometimes in buildings, from the carpet to LVT or wherever. What, what I suggested, and what I wanted to do was, and, and talking with Brendan, too, is peel back the carpet, float it out for two feet, and then, so you don't even know that it's there, and it just transitions straight to the, to the Trazo from there. In the places where we have LVT, which is in the art room and that science lab right there next to the gym, and in the gym, which is the rubber floor, that foam, that, that rubber floor there, that is gonna be a Schluter strip that's there on top of that, because pulling that LVT back in the, in the gym floor, you definitely couldn't do that, whole lot less traffic going through there, a Schluter strip is very durable in there, and, and it'll meet the ADA requirements of the amount of height, it'll be about a little more than, a little less than a quarter inch, a little bit more than an eighth of an inch of, of it, so obviously, if there was nothing there and it was just a zinc strip, you might catch a toe. This'll allow for a smooth transition. We did ask for mock-ups on both of those, and the Schluter strip, I'm sorry, there's a rubber transition from the LVT to the epoxy, and the, where there's epoxy to epoxy, which is bathroom areas only, those big gang bathrooms, that's gonna be a Schluter strip, and then the staff bathrooms, too.
So it's basically 3/16ths of an inch thick of this new product that they're putting on top of it, those areas?
They grown, they grind it down a little bit when they went down in there, so they took a little bit of the top off, so they allowed, it's a quarter inch pore, and then they grind it down, buff it out from the top. So it'll end up being a little under a quarter inch product on top.
And the areas that they had to put the mesh down for the cracks, is it the same thickness there, or is it less because of the mesh that had to go on top?
So it, it'll be, it'll be the same, because when they put, they dug down into those cracks, and then they filled those cracks with epoxy, then they put the webbing over the top of it with an adhesive, and then they put that crack isolation membrane material on top of that, and then they floated the whole thing out, so it'll all match up at the top.
My only concern is that history says that when there's a fault like that, that something's causing that, and it's gonna continue to cause that. Yes, we're putting the mesh there on top of it and sealing it to hopefully prevent it, but have we figured out what was originally causing that to crack? Is it the movement? What was it that was causing the crack in the beginning so that we don't have that same problem as we move forward? And I'm a little concerned that 18 months down the road, in the movement of the building, that we could see those same exact cracks show up in these exact same places.
Everyone was confident in the group that it was not foundation-related, so those cracks weren't related to the foundation. The theories that we had discussed, and I think through some of the coring, we found is that there was never an opportunity for the moisture to wick out of there. So they had built this thing so fast, so quick, and if you remember, the building was not conditioned, they didn't get the AC installed in a timely manner there, so it was, it was running humid and hot, that sand bed never dried out, it has dried out now, and I think the cracking and talking with them is done from that standpoint. And also, there was a couple of cold joints that may have been in there, and that's where they dug those out and they reset them. So I think it really had to do with the conditions, there was even some areas in the, if you're looking at the library, from the cafeteria to the left, there were some open areas up there that water had been penetrating in, that we were on, the contractor, day in and day out to get those sealed up. When they were pouring the, the Trazo, that was happening. So I think it was more about the conditions that it was built in, and then, as you see, and I think everybody noticed that walked that campus, the blue leaking up through that, that was just so much moisture still wicking, wicking through those zinc strips. And it's, and it's had a year to breathe.
Is the original sub covering the cost of this?
Yes.
We're actually getting a credit back, right?
And we did ask for a credit back of 70, $79,000, and they agreed.
And the, the process of doing this overlayment with the webbing and the crack-resistant barrier and things, we vetted not just through Andriola and through POG and through Huckabee, but also, I called GCs completely separate from that, we talked to other flooring, Trazo individuals also, Casey, I think, was actually included in those conversations also, and it is, it was, always came back to that as a very sound way and a, a, a true solution to the problem.
Any other questions on the Creekside? Lake Creek's pretty much done, there's a few wrap-up items there, and some science labs, but that, that campus is, is pretty much done. So the den, the den, and I think if you've, I know you guys haven't walked it in a while, but it's amazing what a good cleaning, and pulling up all the floor protection, and looking at the flooring, and watching the paint go up, the tile get done, and then you would, I mean, you know that when you put ceiling tiles in, it just changes everything, well, all that stuff's in now, we passed all inspections at the, at the den, at the CTE Center, and we are cleared to occupy, made a lot of progress, the furniture is in, in there, so watching the furniture go in the rooms with some of the stuff that the design team picked out a long time ago, and, and decided to put in there, brought some of those rooms to life, it's pretty amazing stuff, and you'll see some of those pictures in here. Cosmo Lab right here, those are the manicure tables, ducted out, and it, it's coming along and moving real good there. This is the robotics room, I have, I have a soft spot in my heart for robotics, my son was, my middle son was a robotics kid, went to state in robotics, I showed him these pictures of these rooms, and he was grinning ear to ear, it's gonna be an unbelievable space for our kids. But that's some of the furniture that's gone in there, and then you can see air and power at each one of these workstations, so they can plug in, work hand tools, whatever, and then you'll see down there, the scissor lifts and the post lifts, and are installed in auto. The, the one on the left is actually the actual service line for the cafeteria, so not culinary, this is the service line, beautiful serving line for those kids there, and then you see on the right is the green screen, there will be a, I guess, a newscast desk right there, that we're, kind of where that stuff is sitting right now, that'll have a TV on front that you can change the logo on that, depending on who's in front of it, and customize it, so that'll be there, and it'll be mobile, that you can move out. Some of the furniture, there's an office right there, a typical office in the front office, and the furniture put in there, and then that was the reception desk, the other one, here's the cafeteria furniture, it's not your typical cafeteria furniture you would see, because this is a unique building, right? It's gonna be kids coming and going quite a bit, it, it's, it's not your 10, 10-kid table with circle seats, it's very unique furniture in there, and some booths, and then you'll see on the right-hand side, it almost looks like two separate pictures glued together, it's a split right down the middle in the cafe at the den, and the furniture put in there, so it certainly looked like a cafe. Right next to the cafeteria, as you guys know, is, is the, the aid stations for our kids in the culinary program, it's all installed in there, and then you have the mobile tables that can be brought out for teaching, and then the teacher workstations in the very far back corner. Here's the front, there'll be a canopy going up, you can kind of see the, the concrete dug out right there, right there for the canopy that'll go in front, and then the emblem's on its way. This is, I went out there today, these pallets are gone now, and they, they needed to get the, some of the fans up, finished out up there. Here is the cattle pens on the left, and the lamb and goat areas on the right, those pens, now, they now have the exercise area for lamb and goat installed on one side, they made some progress, just, I took these two days, or Friday, just today, they made some more progress in there, and you can see the fans installed there. Montgomery High School renovation, this is the one that, you know, it's been a two-year project on this, so they did a lot of East Campus last summer, they're doing a lot of the, the, the rest of the bathrooms in the building, they've got them all rocked, all the tile pulled down, they'll be starting to put tile up in that pretty quick, they're gonna start replacing AC units in the East and West Campus this week, finishing wood blocking for the learning panels, the smart panels, painting all classrooms and common areas is on there, there'll be some new graphics going into some places, kitchen coolers are being installed on that, so you can see here is the floral cooler in, in the floral lab, so we had to update that cooler, pull it out of the construct, our Agmech lab, pull it back in there, this is actually the drain that is required for that cooler, and we talked to the teacher in that classroom quite a bit and got her feedback about where things need to be, and the principal, to make the space usable, the most usable for that, and then here's an example of some of the sheet rock, or the, the rock and the stuff going in to the bathrooms. Here's a completed bathroom, what the tile will look like, and then you can see kind of the dugout of the cooler and freezer area and the cafeteria on the right. Floral cooler will be installed next week, this is another finished-out bathroom, and then you can see the backing for the panels, the smart boards is going up, and then they will begin installing panels, I think they're probably gonna hit that next week, Data Projections is doing all those, right now, they're spending time at Oak Hills and Keenan, and then CTE, and then they're gonna go to MHS once that blocking is all done. The Transportation Fuel Center, so weather has killed us on this project, it's hurt us, but it's, we're still set for a 7:30 substantial completion. This one doesn't, I guess, frighten me as much as the other ones, because we can work around a lot of this if we need to, it doesn't impact kids significantly, and is all that really is left, because it's, I mean, we can put the buses, we can find a place for the buses if need be, but we're gonna get this done with concrete in Phase 2, which is the big area up top, and if you've driven by there, you can see them scraping that thing, they've got most of the dirt hauled out of there. The next steps you'll see on that is you'll see, there's some lime trucks in phase, next to the, the old, where the transportation, well, I'll show it to you, sorry, I had pictures right here. Detention pond is done, that was a big step, because weather hurt us on that, that is done, except for a drain right down the middle that'll connect to that black tube right there, that'll have to be poured, and it should be dried out enough to get that done pretty quick. And then if you look on the right-hand side, that's an area that we have limed already, and we're about to pour, and then you can see fresh lime on the right-hand side, and that goes all the way down to, almost to 149, and that is to the north of the fuel station. The fuel station is in, it's getting commissioned right now, getting ready to go, software uploaded, in fact, we've scheduled a time, or we're scheduling a time for the staff to get a training on how we're gonna do, use some of this equipment in there, and once we do that, they'll begin, or finish commissioning it, and then we'll transfer the old, pull up the old tanks, get those emptied, and then move everything to these, these tanks. But we will not move everything to the, or pull up the old tanks until this is functioning. And then you can see off in the distance there, that is the, the tall building, that is the shed for, for a wash plant, so there's gonna be a wash plant that we purchased that is a walk-behind, battery-operated, hooks up to a hose, clean the buses, sides, front, still gotta hand-wash the hood or quickly, and the tops typically aren't washed that often, you can also put your white fleet on that. Here's another aerial view, drone view of the fuel canopy and the concrete that's been put in, and then here is the, the site right here, this is that whole area right along 149, that is gonna be limed, I believe, next week, and we'll start getting that formed out and poured pretty quickly. Weather, pray for good weather. And then here's another aerial view of the fuel canopy. Renovations to Stewart Creek, Lone Star, and Maylie Ranch. A reminder on this one, and it, and it's kind of mind-blowing if you think about it, there's 112 bathrooms being renovated in this project, they have got them all demoed, and they have started to put up tile and about a quarter of them, and that'll roll pretty quick, putting the tile up in those. A lot of the staff bathrooms are done right now, that's the new reception desk, and this, this completely And this completely changed the dynamic of that front entry. If you remember, it's Stewart Creek, that the top of that reception area, and that's kind of like the director of first impressions, right? Parents come in there all the time. That completely changed the way that hole looked. And the casework is still the same, but that top really made it. And then carpet going in in the library is complete. And as you can tell, we removed all bookshelves out of there and we have purchased a, last board meeting, if you remember, we purchased some mobile bookshelves that'll go in there to replace the ones that we took out on all three campuses. This is Stewart Creek right here with the tile on the right and then they have demoed and they're staging right now, the floor in the gym. And we're requesting that they put in that floor last because it is a, probably the most delicate floor that we're putting in that gym. So we want them to get as much of the dirty work done before they get that thing put in it. But it rolls out pretty quick and then they paint it and put the little squares that teachers like for the kids to sit on. And then they're replacing the backboards with clear backboards on this. Maylie Ranch is the, probably the most specific one outside of all of them. So we are pouring a new turn lane into that because the big concern is right next to these playgrounds was the traffic flow in there. So we're actually cutting that off, turning in a turn lane before all that, so you don't have to loop around there and where kids are playing during the day. All that'll be closed off during the school day. We'll still use it for parent drop-off and pickup because kids aren't traveling back and forth to those playgrounds. So that's going to start next week. They've started the demo work and surveying for that. And then these are actually the playgrounds. Maylie Ranch is the last playground we have to be updated. And they're forming that out today and they'll be pouring, weather permitting, next week for the actual foundation of that. Then they'll put the Pour and Play Soft Cushion, Kitty Cushion in there, then the playgrounds will go on top of it. Athletic Complex, so wanted to spend a little bit of time on this one. This is, you guys may have some questions on this one, but just a reminder of what we're putting in there with the locker room and the field house addition that's going in. If you didn't get a chance to look, I think there was a Facebook post about the turf. That turf pops, the graphics on it pop. I think Dr. Ruffin and I were worried about that gold. The gold looks great and the lions and the bears and the Texas flag looks great. They're sanding it right now. We'll do a final, they're doing, they're going to do, Huckabee's going to do a punch and Stuart will do a punch and then we'll do a final punch on that in the coming weeks. This, if you see on the right-hand side, that is the driveway along the, fully asphalted now and paved, new parking lot A. And then they are completing the road out to Lone Star after that. We did add a light to the end of Lone Star. Our law enforcement folks, partners told us, hey, we want to have a light right there. We're going to have a lot of traffic control out there. So we put a light as close to the entrance right there for people coming in and out because that pathway is lit, but we added one more at the end. Bleachers are going, the press box bleacher portion is going up. The foundations are being poured. It'll be ready for steel when it comes. The press box shaft is being installed now. And then this is the locker room in the new field house. That roof is, I think it's all closed in now up there and they will put the actual roofing material, not just the underlayment, on next week. And then they're going to brick and continue finishing that out, probably be done with that bricking in the next couple of weeks. So going back to, I wanted to give you a timeline of where we are with the bleachers. So Stewart Builders has been in contact with Sturdy Steel, getting their timelines nailed down, putting pressure on them. We've asked Stuart to put pressure on them. We want to make sure this thing is here and ready to go by the first football game. So they are delivering, or they're beginning on 7/7. That's when they're going to start progress. They're going to be having an 11-person crew onsite 12 hours, seven days a week until it's finished, starting on 7/7. So they'll be framing, or they'll be framing steel onsite, large rakers and columns until the 10th and the 17th is framing steel beams, columns, bracing, large rakers. 7/18 center of press box landing, aluminum installed, temporary guard wheel put up, established finished floor and work area. 7/21 to 7/25 remaining stringers installed. Press box is going to be set on 7/25 according to their schedule. And then 7/25 to 8/15 is the decking and finishing out the bleachers. So 8/15 is the substantial completion date that we have been given and I've asked probably five or 10 times, each time it is 8/15 right now.
Do they have some, implement weather days?
They have some cushion in there for weather. But what I've been told is outside of lightning, if it rains, I mean, you don't want people up there slipping and all that stuff. If it rains and stops or whatever, it's not mud that we got to deal with. They can, they can work pretty quickly. And I asked, I said, can they turn on the lights? You know, if it gets to that point? And I think they'll turn on the lights if it gets to that point and continue working. We have made it very clear, we want this thing done by 8/15 from their standpoint. And then we still got to get our inspections after that, but it won't be, that won't be a problem. We'll get that scheduled. Any questions on the stadium or field house bleachers?
What about the other parking lot? The restriping?
We're not, we took that out of the scope. Are you talking about the one on the new home side?
Yeah, the existing home side.
Or the old, the old home side?
Correct.
I call it the, the big parking lot.
Yes.
We did not, we took that overlay out and resurface an overlay out and we're not restriping it right now. It was, it was, it was a million dollar savings to take that out. It cost a lot. Looking back and talking with Jay, overlay probably would not have held up. That parking lot needs to be scraped and re-poured because what we're finding in the current asphalt side on the old visitor side, any equipment that was on there, and we're going to have to repair a lot of that stuff, did not hold up well. So I think it would have been putting Band-Aid on it to even do an overlay. So I think probably one of our future projects needs to be to dig that thing up and redo it for that parking lot. Any other questions on that? There's the turf. So some other summer projects that are happening, Oak Hills and Keenan, just to be like everybody, in line with all the other campuses, we had, we worked with Stuart to come over there to put the backing, power and data, set it up for the, to receive the smart boards. Those are pretty much installed at Oak Hills and Keenan. That project rolled very quickly. Stuart got in and out of there quick. Now we can move data projections to a different campus. Lincoln, if you've driven by Lincoln recently, they poured the driveway, the new apron right there. So that'll make a big difference for people turning in right there. It was in pretty bad shape and they're doing some grading and some work on that, very light work on that. And then shade canopy at the Lake Creek Tennis Court, you'll hear about that later on in the board meeting. And then Oak Hills Outdoor Learning and Eating Space is coming along and we're getting the, trying to find the old Geotech report so, to get that rolling in there. But that'll be a pretty quick up and down on that one. That's it for the bond update. Any questions?
What is the completion of the Ag Barnes? When is that?
That, so they're inspecting, believe it or not, I didn't, I didn't know this, y'all may have known this, but fire marshals are hard to get around the Fourth of July. So they have to inspect all firework stands. And if you can count the number of firework stands that there are, so they're hard to nail down around that Fourth of July time, after Fourth of July, they're there. They're scheduled 7/9, 7/10 to give us occupancy down there. They have, AC is running, they're going to start putting up the ceiling tile. Once the inspection is done, the fire marshal's done, they'll put the ceiling tile up. We're still reviewing the sand right now and I'm meeting with them tomorrow at 5 o'clock to go over the results of that. And then the rest of it is, they still, they're going to RDEX. There's one thing I didn't mention, they, when we, when we opened up and realized that the lamb and goat areas, they have the door that opens up to that arena, right? We didn't have that RDEXed. It was just going to be just that regular shark bite sealed concrete. That's also where the entrances are, the gates to get into the arena, right there on the end. So we're going to RDEX that. I'm having them RDEX just that little section right there next to that door. That, that should be, there shouldn't be any animals moving past that point, is what I've been told. So that was something we're going to add on to that. The rest of the Morgan and their contractor putting up the pens all throughout there, the powers, everything's good there, water's good. The gutters are being installed now on all that in the downspouts and that'll help a lot with getting the water off of there. We've addressed a couple of issues with the downspouts. In my opinion, when I'm going to talk to Jay about it, the downspouts come down and right on the sidewalk on the inside of those. I think they need to be up higher and extend out where it's dumping onto that sidewalk and it doesn't wash back in. I think that's something we need to watch carefully and make adjustments to is that water's draining out of there on the backside where the most strip is. I think talking with some folks, maybe putting some normal just gutter washouts right there to get that water out or maybe some bull rock, make sure it's not eating away at that grass that's right there because that'll get pretty bad.
Are you talking about going into that drainage area in the middle where we were?
So the, the middle part, so the alternate, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
So why don't they saw cut the concrete and go underground? It's just sidewalks. I mean, because it's going to, anyway, we can talk later.
Okay.
It'd be a cheaper way to do it.
The wash stations, did we determine how we're doing them? She's talking about the cattle, tire rails on the, in the cattle to, in the wash rack?
Yeah. We got, we had, we had the, Brendan has sent that plan, so we've got that working. And he drew up based on y'all's feedback on that. About 18 out off, 24.
Yeah.
Yeah. Forty-eight inches high.
But they're going to have to saw cut that as well to put that stuff.
They will.
Yeah.
And they'll re-RDEX that. And then the lamb and goats have pens where they wash so that they run out. This usually is the end of the board meeting, but we kind of.
Any other questions? I don't have anymore. Let's go back to action items. 8A, right-of-way donation deed. So it's, I got it, Brad, you're good. You're good. I talk faster than you do. So I got it, I got it. They're at, thank you, Casey. They're at Lone Star Elementary. The drive that connects 2054 back to our Transportation Center, that is called Bear Cub Drive. When the original folks purchased the properties to the east and north of Lone Star Elementary, a part of that agreement was that we would have that road dedicated for public use and accepted by the county. Very similar to the process that we went through at the Lake Creek entry to get that accepted by the county. The good news is we've already done all of the coring and all that has come back great. We've had good conversations with, I'd be Commissioner Riley in his office. And so this would be a pass a resolution to get that Cub, Bear Cub Drive donated and deeded to the county for public use because those are now being developed and we are obligated contractually based on the original agreement with that landowner to get that dedicated to the county and accept it for public use. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the right-of-way donation deed to Montgomery County for Bear Cub Drive as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? Item B, purchase over 50,000 for student athletic insurance policy. The guy that was so disappointed we skipped action items. Come on, Coastal Plant.
The guy that raced the kid up some stairs on the weekend talking about insurance has the pulled back.
Thank you, Board and Dr. Ruffin. In front of you, you've got the proposal for the student athlete accident insurance and catastrophic insurance. Of course, our, our numbers have changed over the years from 2014 to present as I track what we've been doing here with a number of schools and a number of athletes and miles and different things that we've, we've put on. But I think it's important to continue that coverage and protect our kids. And I think the value that we have here from National Health and also Great American with those two policies presented to you is good value for, for what we have going and something we should proceed with to protect our kids.
What exactly is this covering?
Well, and Larry, I don't know if you want to come up here. We've got Larry Welch here from Texas Kids Insurance. He can.
I guess we decided to let insurance, since it's so exciting to let that finish up the evening.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Actually, the plan that the school district is considering is an all-school plan, which is a little different than, than an all-athletic and activities plan because you're going to be covering actually accidents at school in all the grades from pre-K through grade 12. So that means even accidents in a science lab or English class or a kid going to class runs into a, you know, locker door, someone falls in the lunchroom. All of those things are going to be, are going to be covered now as well as all the UIL, sports, vocational classes, day field trips for educational purposes, just about And just to kind of, for your own information, actually, when you consider this product, the three main things to consider are, of course, price, service and network. When you look at the benefits on these policies from company to company, quite honestly, you could put them in a basket and throw them out and there's, you know, six of one, half a dozen of the other. For example, on an MRI, most of these plans will pay anywhere from 400 to 800, 900 bucks for an MRI. However, it's probably going to cost around $2,500. But in this area, our company, we have a wide range of network providers who will accept what we pay for that MRI as full payment and they want to balance bill the parents. And so what that means is you could have a company where they might pay $800 for that $2,500 MRI. Another company's plan may only pay $500 towards the MRI, but if the company that pays just 500 has an agreement, no balance bill, with a no balance bill provider, they'll take that $500 as full payment. Whereas the company that pays $800, if they don't have an agreement with a balance bill provider, they're going to pay 800 and the parents are going to pay the difference between 2,500 minus 800. And that's why I say network is much more important than actual, the schedule of benefits on the policy. And just off the top of my head, in this area, we have Methodist, Memorial Hermann, Texas Children's and Woodlands Sports Medicine, as well as, you know, St. Joseph and Scott and Wyatt up over in College Station. So we have a, we have the largest no bill, no balance bill network of all the companies that provide, that provide athletic accident insurance for the district. And then the other thing is the service. I will be the service agent for the district here. I currently, I knew Mr. Davidson from Livingston. I've done, I've done a number of districts for over 25 years. So I've gone through a lot of coaches and a lot of superintendents and over the years. You know, I've done College Station for almost 30 years. And as well as I do Conroe, Magnolia, Tomball, Navasota, Willis, Anderson Shiro, just about every district around here. And so I look forward to the prospect of working with y'all and, you know, and they'll have access. I'm going to come do a training session in July with all the athletic trainers and try to get the nurses and everything involved too, since we'll be covering the elementary kids and all the other kids as well. And so, anyway, that's kind of it in a nutshell. And so if y'all have any other, any other questions, why you got me up here?
So if someone had to file a claim, would it be somebody from our administration filing it or the parents?
Well, claim forms, it's a one, the filling out part is only one page. The top half of it, the school fills out because the policy is in the school district's name. And so the athletic trainer, coach or whomever, as long as it's an employee of the school district, someone at the school has to fill out the top part of it. The bottom part of it, the parents fill out. And then all the instructions for filling out the claim are on the back. They need to read the back of that claim form. And then the claim form is submitted then to the student accident insurance, to the claims office. Of course, all student accident insurance is secondary to whatever the parents have. The parents' insurance is primary, you know, they have to pay first, then the school accident insurance pays its part. And of course, if you go to a network provider in that case, probably everything's going to be taken care of. Of course, you get a lot of parents who don't have any insurance on their kids. You know, some of the lower-income kids have Medicaid. Uh, you know, some of the lower income kids have Medicaid, they can go Medicaid and they're fine. The more affluent parents have very good insurance policies and they don't necessarily need it. But then you have what I call middle class blue collar workers who maybe work for a place that provides their insurance, but they can't afford the insurance to cover their kids. You know, their premiums are just too high, but they are concerned about paying their bills and their credit and everything. And those are the types of families that really do use, uh, use the insurance, that it's really, really helps those out in need. And, uh, can I give you one quick little story right quick? Uh, I used to be, back in the dark ages, I was a head girls' basketball coach. And back then, uh, the only student accident insurance was only for the football players and usually only for the high school players. Uh, I took a team up to Marlin and we were playing in a, a basketball game. And, uh, about the middle of, uh, fourth quarter, when the girls, she was trying to play center underneath the basket and they had some big girls, she took an elbow right to the nose and I mean, blood went everywhere, all over the floor. Of course, it wasn't a, you know, life threatening injury. So, you know, back then, I was the only person there. There were hardly any parents there, just me, I drove the bus, coached the teams, I did everything. So we loaded her on the bus and took her to the local hospital after the game. And we got there to the hospital and they were getting ready to treat her and then someone asked me, who's going to pay the bill? Who's going to pay the bill? You know, and I didn't know too much back then, I sort of knew that only, uh, the football players had school coverage. And I also knew Robbie, Robbie Anderson, that was the name of the girl that got hit, that she lived in Columbus Village and, uh, I'm like, I'd never seen her parents, I'd seen her grandparents once. Uh, in fact, most of the kids I had playing, parents wouldn't even show up, only a couple of kids, only a couple of kids' parents showed up. And so I thought, what am I going to tell this person? And I finally said, just send the bill to the school. Send it to the school. You know, she accepted that. Couple of months later, I get called in by the athletic director, Coach Davis. Said, Larry, said, we're getting this bill here from the hospital on, uh, at Marlin on Robbie, said, you need to take this and. Give this to her parents. And I said, uh, Coach Davis, I said, I can take this bill, you know, and give it to her, but I know, I know they don't have any insurance, she lives over in Columbus Village, being raised by grandparents, they're never going to pay this bill. And Coach said, well, the school's not going to pay for it. And I said, well, I don't guess anybody is then. And, uh, Coach Davis, he looked at me, grinned, and he took that bill and he just rolled it into a pile of trash and dumped it in the trash can. But you know, that, there's a lesson behind that, that, that's one of the reasons why we need to have this for these kids to help them out. And the final reason is, I believe, legally, you don't have to provide it, you don't have to buy a, buy a stitch of insurance for these kids. But if you're charging admission, collecting money, I don't care if it pays for the sport or not, if you're collecting money for people to go and watch these kids play and represent the community and sacrifice their bodies, especially in football and things like that that are dangerous. And then if they get hurt out there and, and, and their knee, you know, have to have a, a knee surgery or whatever, some of them back injuries, you know, severe injuries, and you don't have any insurance on them and you tell the parents, even though you've been collecting money for admission and you say, well, you, you get hurt, it's all on you, you have to take care of it, we're not going to do anything to help you out. Legally, you can do that, but morally, I don't think that's right. And so that's why I really believe in, in what I do, what I do. So any, anybody, if you have any further questions, I'll, I'll hush.
No, sir, thank you. Um, is there a motion to approve the student athletic insurance policy as presented?
A motion, we approve the student athletic insurance policy as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Ivy, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron, all in favor? Any, I'm sorry, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Uh, purch- item C, purchase over fifty thousand for tennis court shade structures at Lake Creek High School.
I got it, I got it. We've talked about it before. We've talked about it before.
He's stealing your thunder.
Stealing your thunder, man. Um, yep, so this is just, uh, a kind of a comparability issue also, uh, MHS has got, uh, shade there at the tennis courts and also dealing with U I L new guidelines and the, the heat bulb, uh, index, uh, providing those, uh, those student athletes a dedicated shade area there at, uh, Lake Creek, uh, and it'll be purchased with some of that leftover, um, budget on the renovations to Lake Creek, uh, so it's purchased through bond funds.
Is there a motion to approve the purchase over fifty thousand for tennis court shade structures at Lake Creek High School as presented?
I, sorry. Getting off, jumping the gun. I motion that we approve the purchase of over fifty thousand dollars for tennis court shade structures at Lake Creek High School as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Ivy, a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Mr. Keelen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Uh, item D, purchase over fifty thousand for silent panic alert hardware.
All right, I am filling in for Ms. Davis tonight as she is at a technology conference. Um, this is not a new project, um, we brought this back in April for your approval, this is the Crisis Go Silent Panic Alert System. Um, that, at that time, we brought you an estimated cost. And as we have gone through the project line by line, we've gotten to the, towards the end of the project, this final phase is going to put us over that estimated cost. So we wanted to bring this back to you just as the final piece. Um, this is to cover all of the, um, auxiliary sites such as the stadium, athletic fields, transportation. We want to make sure that no matter where our employees are at, that those panic alert buttons work, um, and then additional, um, buttons for substitutes and additional staff.
Any questions?
What was the difference in price?
So this will actually, um, put us over the estimated cost by about forty-eight thousand.
You mentioned buses are, do, is, do bus drivers?
The bus drivers will have a button.
Love that, okay.
Yes.
Any questions? Is there a motion to, uh, to approve the purchase over fifty thousand for silent panic hardware and safety grant cycle one funds as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the silent panic alert hardware.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron, any, uh, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rob. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Uh, item E, budget amendment number two.
This is our final budget amendment of the year and, um, it just covers additional person, purchases that we had throughout the year and gets all our functional categories to the, the level they need to be to close out our budget.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve budget amendment number two for the 2024, 2025 as presented?
A motion, we approve the budget amendment number two for the 2024, 2025 year as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Ivy, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rob. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item F, 2025, 2026 general operating budgets.
Yes, so this is, uh, what Ben went over, uh, to start off our meeting, uh, there in your board book, um, and it is required before we, uh, roll over, because we're a June, July one fiscal year, we've got to pass our budget by June 30th. Uh, you always have to pass your budget before your tax rate, so your tax rate will come, um, subsequently in August when we get that finalized from T E A. And it's balanced. Not passing a deficit budget, there's been a lot of, uh, we kind of touched on earlier, the, the, the financial swing that we have been able to successfully accomplish in this district over the last eighteen months has been, uh, nothing short of, uh, astounding and it, it's a testament to, uh, one, our, our, our staff's willingness to, to work with us, to understand efficiencies need to be made in certain areas, uh, to be patient with us in other areas, and then obviously our community's overall support, um, of Proposition A and of the passage of our Vader.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 general operating budget, child nutrition budget and debt service budget as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Rob, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item G, the 2025, 2026 compensation plan.
Uh, we've had to wait a little while because of the legislator being in session. Um, but we're to a point with understanding our projected revenues and our projected expenditures and a general enough understanding of House Bill Two, uh, that we can go ahead and proceed with a, uh, compensation plan. All right, so, uh, the compensation plan objectives, uh, really to utilize our funding increases from Proposition A and House Bill Two to do these things. Adopt a meaningful compensation plan that impacts all staff, ensure non-teaching staff, which we'll talk a little bit more about this, uh, non-teaching staff that do not qualify for the state funded raises, receive the same raise as those that do qualify. Uh, we have several teaching, several non-teaching staff on the teacher pay scale. Uh, balance, rising healthcare costs is another objective through this plan, and then provide as equitable compensation increases across pay grades and groups as possible, and then continue to focus on the overall financial position of the district to ensure future budget capacity to maintain competitive compensation. So House Bill Two, just a review of what, what took place. Um, first of all, we kind of touched on this earlier through Justin's presentation, but, um, our conversations, our, our work, our collaboration with our legislators this session was constant and it was ongoing. Um, did everything turn out exactly the way that we could have imagined? No, but we're not going to discredit the good work and progress that was made. Uh, and we're very thankful for, uh, both Senator Creighton and Representative Metcalf's, uh, their willingness to listen to us, um, their willingness to take input, um, and, and it really did result in legislation, not just House Bill Two, but other pieces of legislation that impact Montgomery ISD in a positive way. So, House Bill Two, uh, established the teacher retention allotment and the T R A required and funded raises for zero to two-year teachers, it did not provide a funded raise for. For teachers with three to four years experience, it provided a raise of twenty-five hundred dollars that is funded by this T R A. And then five plus year teachers, uh, we are required to give them a five thousand dollar raise funded through the T R A. House Bill Two also established other allotments, uh, like the support staff allotment, and I believe they're calling it the A B C allotment to offset general expenses of the district. Um, though those support staff allotment doesn't provide, uh, full funding to cover support staff, luckily, we've got our Vader passage so we can couple all that together and put this great compensation plan forward today, so. So the compensation plan, let's take a look at, um, really, I wanted to focus on what the House Bill Two parts of this are. So we've got this broken off into teachers, non-teaching staff on the teacher pay scale, those are folks like your nurses, um, who, um, it's ten o'clock, librarians, thank you, um, interventions, there you go. So you can see that what we received funding for through this House Bill Two and through the teacher retention allotment, it only provided funding for those three to four year teachers and the five plus year teachers. But it was up to us to look at that and say, all right, so that non-teaching staff on the teacher pay scale, um, we want to be as comparable as we can, we want to make sure that what they receive, we can fund locally for others. Uh, and so that's what the next step of this will show you, is that what we're going to do and what we're presenting tonight is, it actually provides a, uh, uh, not a twenty-five hundred dollar and a five thousand dollar raise, it goes beyond that. And not only does it go beyond that, but we as a district are able to look at our zero to two-year teachers and say, although the teacher retention allotment did not fund a raise for you, we are going to fund what essentially amounts to a five percent raise, and that's anywhere from twenty-six hundred to twenty-eight hundred, twenty-nine hundred dollars. Same thing for our three to four year teachers. Uh, we are going to go above and beyond what the state of Texas is funding us for, uh, and we're going to add funds to that and get you to a twenty-nine hundred dollar raise. Same thing with the five plus year teachers, go beyond what is provided for us and funded for us, uh, and that ends up to be, uh, anywhere from a nine percent raise to a seven and a half percent raise. And the key here is looking at that second category underneath them, is we've been able to match it for everyone on the pay scale, regardless of if you qualify for these raises or not, we've matched it for everyone on the pay scale. And you'll see that not only do we match it, and I've touched on this earlier, but we've, we've gone above and beyond what is required and what is funded. And so it, it's really important to understand, we'll talk about this at the big picture at the end of it, but all of what we're looking at on the right-hand side are what M I S D is committing above and beyond what is funded through the teacher retention allotment. Those are our local funds that we are putting into this compensation plan. So the next thing we'll highlight here is this, uh, objective of providing equitable, equity in the compensation plan and trying to make sure that these other pay scale groups, the admin pay scale, other, which is transportation, auxiliary clerical, paraprofessional, um, that, that everyone receives as equitable compensation increase as possible. Um, and I will say on the admin pay scale, that, that kind of gets misconstrued sometimes, you don't always understand who is on our admin pay scale, you immediately assume that's the principals, assistant principals, that's district leadership, that's also our professional pay scale. So that's our I T department, that's, um, coordinators and directors, and so, uh, that is very comprehensive of a group. And so what you'll see where we've been able to do in this compensation plan we will propose is, at the admin pay scale, uh, we are going to propose a four percent raise on the midpoint, and for the other, transportation auxiliary clerical and paraprofessional, a six percent raise on the midpoint. So we've been able to walk through a lot of these objectives and we're going to continue to do that because the next one that we'll highlight is balancing rising healthcare costs and making sure that we're impacting all M I S D staff. Um, so we'll look at the healthcare piece and the substitute piece, and what we've been able to include in this compensation plan is an increase to the subpay, five dollars per day, and then also increase the healthcare contribution from the district, thirty dollars per month. So that's three hundred and sixty dollars additionally per year for our employees that receive our healthcare. So right now, the district contributes three hundred and seventy dollars per month, we're going to be contributing four hundred dollars per month, uh, to offset employee healthcare costs. And then the last part of that, which is really exciting, um, is a one-time all-staff stipend that we're able to approve right now to be paid out in December. Um, and, and education, our teachers, our pairs, our bus drivers, um, it's very rare that, that we're able to just drop five hundred dollars on them in a month. And so that's a very exciting opportunity for our people and obviously it does impact all of our staff. So what does this all mean? It means that over, this is a, over two-point-six million dollar commitment by Montgomery ISD outside of what is funded through the teacher retention allotment. To think where we were twelve months ago in approving a one percent raise for all of our staff to this is, is really something to celebrate, um, and be excited about. So to go over the highlights here, that starting zero to two teacher, it actually pushes our starting pay for teachers over sixty thousand dollars a year. It increases teacher pay raises beyond what is required and funded, we've talked about that. What you don't see in here though is, we started to look at the individual pay grades ahead of these four percent, six percent, five percent raises and make market-based adjustments through several different pay grades and different stipends. So certain pay grades might actually see a larger increase to make sure that they stay aligned with, uh, market comps. Talked about it, increasing our district employee healthcare contribution from three-seventy to four hundred, uh, which, so totally, the district pays forty-eight hundred dollars annually towards employee healthcare, provides all staff with that one-time stipend, auxiliary support staff receive six percent, all staff on that teacher pay scale receive anywhere from five up to nine percent raise, uh, and then staff on administrative pay scale receive the four percent raise, and then we're able to include substitute pay also.
So we can do all of this without cutting any staff, right?
We can do all this without cutting staff, and if you think back to what we've added in staff, we've been able to do all this with adding, Ms. Carrie Clark talked about the impact our behavior intervention is going to have, we've got one housed at Creekside now and one housed at Montgomery Elementary, the art facilitators that we've added, the cares classrooms that we've added, we've been able to do all of this and add staff and build in, um, uh, capacity to handle growth, uh, if growth occurs, and we have to bring on new staff throughout the course of the year.
Any other comments or questions?
I've got one. This is just my personal opinion, okay?
This is just my personal opinion, okay? I feel we're not rewarding our tenure teachers enough for their loyalty to the district, for the bulk of their careers, but I am happy that the rest of the employees are getting a raise across the board. However, I feel this board administration could have done better for our teachers, why I feel that I will still vote yes for this, it's just because it does offer some increase in pay, I just want the teachers to know my opinion on this.
Any other comments or questions?
I am thrilled that we're able to not just think about what the TRA is doing for staff, but really look at all of our, all of our staff, our paras, our child nutrition workers, we, you know, it takes a village, and I feel like we're one of the districts in the area that's really able to take that into account and show our appreciation to, you know, the people that are Montgomery ISD, which is everyone.
I'll just echo what Dr. Ivy said, it is that when you compare what other districts are doing, the fact that we were able to touch everyone speaks volumes. It does take a village to run this. On what Mr. Dennison said, I would like in the future to, that we do put some emphasis on our tenure teachers to try to reward them, to keep them. It shows that there's a lot of success when you have teachers that are in the buildings for longer than ten years, that stay within a district, and I would hope that in the future, we could put some more emphasis in that direction. But I commend everyone that was involved in putting this together, it was a journey to get to the point that we're at, and I commend everyone for getting to this point. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the 2025-2026 compensation plan as presented?
I motion we approve the 2025-2026 compensation plan as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Ivy, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Turner, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, and it is officially ten-twelve, and this meeting is adjourned.